Ask Lori if she would please take a roll call.
Mayron Bane?
Here.
Pat Bird?
Here.
Kurt Eckes?
Here.
Carrie Kayler?
Here.
Brenda Mamer?
Here.
Tom Mueller?
Here.
Jeff Peterson?
Here.
Louise Shaw?
Here.
Lynn Zentner?
Here.
Thank you. At this time, would everyone stand and join us in the pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At the conclusion of the open session, the board may adjourn into executive closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.85 per N1 and E for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. More specifically, this evening, we will be discussing review master agreement issues and review administrative contract issues. The board may reconvene into open session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.85 per N2 if necessary to act on considerations given during the executive session. Sue Byer is not with us this evening, and Lori Pagel is sitting in for her, so we're all trying to be extra kind and succinct in our motions so that we can help Lori out and get everything down. At this time, we have special guest presentations, and Chad Sharon is one of our student representatives, and he has been relieved of his duties of sitting at the board with us, but if he would come up here, Chad, I would like to present to you... Danielle Rindell is the other student representative, and she was not able to be with us this evening, but we do have a plaque for Chad in appreciation for your representation of the Merrill High School Student Council on the MAPS Board of Education. In the years 2001, 2002, we'll present you with your plaque to put in your dorm room. And we really appreciate all your efforts in sticking with us through some kind of long nights on the board. I think you always got the long meetings, Danielle always got the short meetings, but we do appreciate it. Are there any comments you'd like to make?
Just like to thank the whole board and for coming up with the idea of the student representative. It was really one of the best learning experiences that I've had all year. Definitely interesting with all the characters we have in here, so just thank you. Thank you everybody for...
Thank you, Chad. This is the time on the agenda where we have public comments and agenda requests, and I would ask if there's anyone in the audience that wishes to make an agenda request or speak to the board on any issue at this time. Seeing none, we can move on to board president... No, I'm sorry, Tom.
I just wanted to take a moment to thank the organizers, volunteers, and sponsors of the senior graduation party. They really did an excellent job. My understanding is the participation doubled from last year, and I would guess word of mouth will double it again, so I just really want to express my appreciation for all the hard work they did and excellent job.
Oh, thank you, Tom. That's great news that they had a good show.
Kurt? I've done this in the past, and I had the pleasure of going through the building construction class open house, and I would just like to say thank you to Brian Aestrick and the building construction class for putting together a really nice house.
Thank you. We will miss Brian.
Thanks, you will.
Any other comment? Seeing none, we can move on to board president communications. I did receive a notice that Todd Frederick is running 435th Assembly District candidate, and they are having a dinner and refreshments on Saturday, June 15th, from 3:00 to 7:00 PM, if anyone on the board is able to attend. I've got a phone number I can pass this around to you. It's (536) 3199, the app that you RSVP. That's this Saturday from 3:00 to 7:00. Got a thank you note from Lynn Poofal for the O'Reilly Scholarship that she received. I think we all got a copy of the Merrill Manifesto, and there were some really interesting articles and poems and such in there, so thank you. That was really interesting to see in our packets. I received from the NSBA a little brochure on school board members' guide to sex education. There's a couple interesting pieces in here. One's a fact sheet, and I'll ask if Lori or Sue, when she's back, would copy those pieces. I've got paper clips for the board members, and then maybe pass that on to the youth growth and development committee. We did receive news that Pat Weber, a former board member of longstanding with this board of 18 years, she did serve the Merrill community, and just wished to publicly express our sympathy to her family, and she certainly served well on the board, and I think everyone always had good comments about Pat and her service. Carrie, you represented us at the voting of the representative for Region 5, the interim representative. Do you want to tell us how it went?
Yeah, I went there last Wednesday, I think it was, at the North Central Technical Institute, and they had all three delegates there, and they each just spoke for about two, three minutes, and then we got to vote, and they explained how the voting procedure went, and I cast our ballot for who we all agreed on, and we were not successful. The person that got it was Walter Wetzel, Wetzel from Nielsville, and evidently he had the majority of the vote. If there would have been a tie or closer, then we would have voted again, but he evidently had the majority, so Walter won.
Thank you, Carrie, for going and taking care of that for us. I want to thank everyone for... I know Louise wasn't able to be there, but everyone else for coming to graduation. I thought they did a nice job this year, and it went well. The MAPS retirement dinner, there was a lot of good comments about all of our retiring teachers and some great stories, so that was a nice evening. Anyone able to attend Prairie River Middle School? How about the Civil War Day?
Yes.
Brenda Mamer? Did you want to comment for a call?
It was just a fantastic event. It was very professional, and kids were very interested and well-prepared for it, and I have some pictures I can pass around if there anyone wants to look. It was really a wonderful event.
What I remember most about it, the whole thing was very well put together, but I was watching Abraham Lincoln speak, and while he was speaking, I was looking at the students who were watching him, and there was an eighth grade boy who was just... He was just staring at Abraham Lincoln, and he was really there, so that was really cool. Thank you.
Well, I think compared with last year, when they had a little bit of rain and cold weather, this year it was bright and sunny, and the kids were just loving it, and as they march across the bridge in their squad, the platoons go to the different areas, you can see the interest and enthusiasm on the part of the kids. They really are there. It's fun activity for them.
Thank you. I received an invitation to enroll in misfrah. I don't know if we are, but I'll pass that on to you, and I think we all also received that, and also want to pass that on to board members. And I want to thank you, Frank, for being so timely in getting a letter out to all the members of the ad hoc committee, as Lynn suggested, and thank you, Mr.... That's all I have. Any other corrections from you?
Just a communication piece. The mayor invited people in the community to come and have a surprise coffee that was sponsored by the State Journal and Public Radio for gubernatorial candidates, where they pick up a candidate, take them to some coffee shop across the state. I had the good fortune to have coffee with Congressman Tom Barrett, who is a Democratic gubernatorial candidate, and Lynn Poofal, as a high school student, was there as well. I asked about his stand on education and funding for government mandates, and he responded in good party fashion, saying that he, as a Democrat, feels that they should do away with the QEO. With his legal background, however, he also mentioned the importance to have clear, tight mediation and arbitration laws, if in fact the QEO is gone. So I thought that was interesting. He supports two-thirds funding. So those are kind of the highlights. And he feels pretty strongly that if governments do mandate expectations to schools, that they should fund them, so I was pleased to hear that. He feels real strongly about consolidation, and I thought of how many years we've had someone representing the school district with the county and city government, and I think, you know, that's going to be a continued trend of the future, to do consolidation with the different institutions. And he also said... talked about his willingness to work as a bipartisan governor, because he feels that party politics end up stale-mating forward movement, and that he said, let's face it, we all need to be on the same bus going the same direction, and I thought it was fascinating to use the word "law". Talked about education a lot. He has four small children, so that helps immensely ground him to the importance of education in the state.
Thank you for going, and thank you for bringing up education. Any other course funding issues or can you just... Put your hand.
I just have a couple of things. I had included in the mailing a couple of letters, one from the mayor regarding the moth accident, and another one regarding the major repeat panel tackle box project. At the last meeting, I had told the board that we lost the appeals process on the boundary change, and this... I'm passing around a document that relates specifically to that, so that's just for your information. You probably might want to keep that, because those types of events happen very rarely in the history of the school district, what along the state. I also want to thank everybody that participated and helped with the first joint little picnic gathering we had tonight. It's clouding over now. I think I tend to come in. I'll thank Roxy for putting together the plates, burgers, and all of the special things. Don and John for being the head chefs and taking care of us with the cooking down there. And to let you know that in August, we're going to plan a comparable evening, probably at the school forest. We'll maybe have a little social activity first, and then we will have a little bit more formal program as well. So, thank you all for participating. I think it was a good event for all of us.
Thank you all for coming up with the idea. I think we all had a good time. Anything else?
That's enough for the... I'll introduce the others in a minute.
Okay. Anything under old business?
No, we will stand on our 5:50.
Approval of minutes of the May 22nd, 2002 regular board meeting. Everyone was present. Bye, Chad. Tom?
I would like to ask for correction of minutes. I need to dispel the rampant rumor that my wife is a secret member of the Board of Education.
On what page was that?
Page three. I believe I should be Brenda Mamer about halfway down the page there under public comments. I was wondering if that was the case, or if it was something else that had happened.
You know that wedding she was at tonight? Well, that...
Did you get that? Any other corrections or additions or comments on the minutes?
Very minor. There's one... Some... I don't know, I just accidentally dropped my... The last initial of my name, so I'm Lynn Zetney. Somewhere in here I read it.
Page five, the very bottom, second to the bottom.
There I am.
Motion by Peterson.
Second by Zetney.
Thank you. Any other corrections or additions?
Cell check doesn't get sent or either.
Seeing nothing else, then, I would look for motion to approve the minutes as amended, and everyone was present. Jeff?
I'll make that one.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Jeff, second by Kurt. Approve the minutes of the May 22nd board meeting as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Anyone abstaining? Thank you all. Moving on to approval of claims and vouchers. Tom?
I would move to approve the claims and voucher packets dated 5/30/2002 and 6/6/2002.
Do I have a second to that?
I'd like to second it, but I need to abstain from one.
You may still... Is that when do I do... Okay. So I have a motion to approve the vouchers, second by Brenda, and then when we do the roll call vote, you can mention which one you need to abstain on. Are there any questions about the vouchers? Tom? Tom or Brenda, any comments from the review?
It's gotta be two pages or something, but everything looked in order.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments, then, I'll ask Lori if she would do a roll call vote. Kurt Eckes?
Aye.
Carrie Kayler?
Aye.
Brenda Mamer?
I need to abstain from invoice number 492356 for Brenda's piano service. But also say aye.
Aye. If you approve it, thank you. Okay, Tom Mueller?
Aye.
Jeff Peterson?
Aye.
Louise Shaw?
Aye.
Lynn Zentner?
Aye.
Ron Bane?
Aye.
Pat Bird?
Aye, but I also need to abstain on check number 47018 to Pine Ridge Convenience Mart.
That motion carries. All of the vouchers are approved. The next item is to consider district retirements or resignations.
Excuse me?
Yes, sir.
Before we go on to the next item, we need to request a motion relating to the approval of vouchers and payroll in the absence of a regular board meeting during the months of June and July. So I prepared a draft motion that would say whomever makes the motion move that during the months of June and July of 2002, in the absence of regular board meetings, two-thirds of the membership of the finance committee be authorized to approve payroll and vouchers.
I believe the treasurer's ready to make that motion. Tom?
I moved it during the months of June and July of 2002. Do you have it already? Okay, I so moved that, and I believe the purpose of that would be to approve in the absence of the regular board meetings, and checks could continue to be paid on schedule.
Okay. Do I have a second to the motion? Ron?
Second that.
Any further comments? Tom?
No, it seems like necessary in order to make sure everything gets paid on time, and we'll just meet without the rest of the board.
Anything, Ron?
No, it's amazing, though, how we can do business in the summer without really looking at all the figures, and so I'm glad that the money is coming in, that we can still spend. But I'm a little bit leery after what I heard on the radio with our legislators, you have to just... We're all leery.
Any other questions or comments before we vote on this motion? It is to allow the two-thirds of the finance committee to approve the payroll and vouchers through the summer when we cannot meet. Seeing none, Lynn? You're welcome.
You don't have to for this one, but you could. It might be a good idea.
Why don't we do a roll call? Carrie Kayler?
Aye.
Brenda Mamer?
Aye.
Tom Mueller?
Aye.
Jeff Peterson?
Aye.
Louise Shaw?
Aye.
Lynn Zentner?
Aye.
Ron Bane?
Aye.
Pat Bird?
Aye.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Kurt Eckes?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, then, Paul, is to consider retirements or resignations.
We have two resignations for the board to act on tonight. Should we do them separately?
Yes, please.
The first one is the resignation of Chris Ponsec. Chris is a guidance counselor at Prairie River Middle School, and she is offered her resignation.
Do I have a motion to accept Chris Ponsec's resignation? Louise, I'm of acceptance. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second of motion.
Do you have any comment, Louise? Jeff?
No.
Any comments or questions from anyone on the board? Seeing none, those in favor of accepting Chris Ponsec's resignation signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Anyone abstaining? Thank you. That resignation is accepted.
Second one is the resignation of Janet Van Goghtham. Janet has been teaching third grade this past year, but primarily either first or second grade throughout her career at Jefferson Elementary School, and has offered her resignation to the school board.
Do we have a motion to accept Janet Van Goghtham's resignation, Lynn?
I'm of acceptance of Janet's resignation.
Do we have a second to that motion?
A second that...
Any comment, Lynn?
Other than Janet was an incredibly... It may still be, but an incredibly creative teacher, and the only teacher that has had the mayor of Muchkinville from the movie Dorothy and the Wizard of Oz come to our school, and she reacted, reenacted The Wizard of Oz at Jefferson, and it was an incredible experience for children.
Any other comment, Brenda? Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, then, voting on the motion to accept Janet Van Goghtham's resignation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Anyone abstaining? Okay, thank you. That resignation is accepted as well. Kurt?
I've got a question as to these resignations. Are they going to be posted, or are you going through a process to determine need?
We go through a process, as I said before, with every one of these, to see if there's a way that we could accommodate the educational needs and dealing with the position differently. And in each one of these cases... In the case of the guidance counselor one, we did not go through that process, because at the March board meeting, one of the recommendations we had was to reduce the counseling position, and the board at that time said, no, we're going to maintain that one, so we just have automatically posted that one. Otherwise, with all of the other positions, we go through a process.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other question? Seeing none, then, Paul, can we move into hirings and contracts?
Yes. We have two tonight, two teacher recommendations tonight, and associate principal recommendation, and then Frank will be making requests from the board. So we'll start with the teachers. The first teacher I'd like to recommend that the board authorize issuance of contracts to is Sarah Maves, who is recommending... We're recommending as a Spanish teacher between middle school and the high school. Sarah is a December graduate of UW Stevens Point, who this past spring has been doing long... Had a long-term substitute position in Medford, and also been doing tutoring of limited English proficiency students. And I'd like to recommend that we issue a contract for Sarah. The salary at $28,806, if you recall, that's the 2000, 2001 salary that we're still operating under, and so the salary will increase when we settle the contract. So that's my first recommendation to the board.
Do I have a motion to accept Sarah... How did you pronounce?
Maves, I believe it is. It's not pronounced how it's spelled.
Sarah Maves. Jeff?
I'll make the motion that the board authorize the issuance of a contract to Sarah Maves for the 2002, 2003 school year.
Do I have a second to that motion? Lynn?
I second that motion.
Do you have any comment, Jeff?
No, I'm glad to see that we're able to fill out a poor language position.
Lynn?
My only question is, will administration consider our Spanish teachers when we look at potential ESL needs at the elementary schools in this language and potentially growing population?
In fact, we have used our high school Spanish program to assist with that.
Oh, good. Excellent. Thank you.
Any other question or comments from anyone on the board? Seeing none, then, we will vote on the motion to hire Sarah Maves. All those?
Roll call.
Roll call, yeah. Sorry. Lori, need to do a roll call. Okay. Brenda Mamer?
Aye.
Tom Mueller?
Aye.
Jeff Peterson?
Aye.
Louise Shaw?
Aye.
Lynn Zentner?
C. Aye.
Let's see, do the next one.
Ron Bane?
You didn't make me to it. I was going to say C.
C?
It means the same thing.
Kurt Eckes?
Aye.
Carrie Kayler?
Aye.
Pat Bird?
Aye.
That motion carries. Thank you.
The next recommendation is for... To issue a contract to Amy Bastian. Amy is... And that would be for middle school and high school German position. Amy is currently a teacher at Toma High School, has been teaching there for the last two years. She is also a graduate of UW Stevens Point and comes highly recommended, and I recommend that we issue a contract to Amy, and I would echo Lynn's sentiments that language teachers like this are very hard to come by, and I think we're fortunate to have two quality candidates.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept the hiring of Amy Bastian? Brenda?
I'd like to make a motion to hire Amy Bastian for the German position.
Do I have a second to that motion? Tom?
I would second that motion.
Any discussion, Brenda?
Nine.
Oh.
Okay, now remember, we have a substitute. Take it easy on the German. Don't care. Everybody behave now. Okay. Any other questions or discussion on the position of Amy Bastian?
You said she had two years of experience, or she thought two years. Why are we starting her off?
Good question. The way our current salary schedule works is that all teachers from one to five years of experience are at the base.
Okay, thank you.
And it says step five, but that is our base.
Yes.
At this point in time. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. Lori, try a roll call. Okay. Tom Mueller?
Aye.
Jeff Peterson?
I could say ya. Aye.
Louise Shaw?
Aye.
Lynn Zentner?
Aye.
Ron Bane?
Properly, it's ya boi.
Kurt Eckes?
Aye.
Carrie Kayler?
Aye.
Brenda Mamer?
Aye.
Pat Bird?
Aye.
Thank you. That motion carries.
I've got two seconds. The next piece on the recommendations to offer contracts is for the high school associate principal. I'm passing around three two-sided pages that relate to the gentleman. Larry Teis, pardon me, Teis, is with us tonight, his wife Amber, their daughter Hannah, back here, and Larry's dad, Mike, is sitting by the door here. We had about 30 applicants for this position. The number was reduced to five for interviews. Those individuals came in for interview. Both Ron and Pat were on the interview team, and I think everybody was notably duly impressed with Larry's enthusiasm, his background. He's been at Kakana since 1998. He's an English teacher, serves as the English department chair, worked to coordinate summer school activities there, has worked with some special ed programs coordinating activities. I'm sure Pat or I...
Do you have anything to add, Lynn?
Yes, definitely what you said, Frank, is all very true with a lot of color, and the word "passion" will be added to describe Larry's commitment to teaching at this position. That's his own words. But the summer school program, if and when, or whatever level we have, I'm sure if he's got anything to do with it, it will really be a very successful program.
I agree. Through the interview process, I think it was pretty unanimous that the group felt like Larry would be a good choice and a good fit for this position, so we wholeheartedly approved.
On top of that... On top of that, candidates always have a list of at least three or four or five references to contact. I think Larry had about ten. I only contacted two of them, they were sort of important to me, but I contacted four or five others that worked on his list, they're people that I know that know that know that know. And we see, you know, very, very positive comments that most of the people on the interview committee felt, that from the director of curriculum, which is John Moore, not Roger Moore, I'm just doing a pun here. Talked about him having done an outstanding job in English with the alignment with the standards and doing the same kinds of things that we've worked ourselves through in this district. Very competent with the summer school program, developed a rapport to get deficient credit students into an alternative program, one of the things that, you know, we work with as well. Just in general, very good with the curriculum, has a very positive reputation. I spoke with, have that one here, Joe Lucas, who is the director of special education and although he said he had had a lot of contact with Larry, was aware of the work with the special education students and the alternative education program and was very positive about Larry as well. I spoke with Mary Weber, who's the human resource person, who gave me about two hours of heartburn and anxiety on Friday morning because one of the questions I always ask of HR people is what was the current salary the individual is making? She had somebody looking it up and in her haste, they gave me the wrong salary. I think they gave me the salary of one of the high school principals or superintendents. There's no way in the world where she did that. I got back after lunch and they corrected that. So I know he's not making a million and a half dollars a year down at Kakana. But Mary Weber also had very positive remarks saying that he's respected by both parents and students. He has a great work ethic and again, talking about his leadership skills in the English department, his department chair and his passion. And I think the enthusiasm and passion is one of the things we saw continuously through the interview process. In fact, I think he was the only candidate that I had to say, wait a minute, we need to move on to another question here. So I strongly recommend that this board offer a contract to Larry Teis as high school associate principal, beginning with the two thousand two, two thousand three school year.
Brian, you were on the committee as well, did you have any comments that you wish to make?
Oh, you said it all.
Thank you.
I agree.
Okay. Ron?
I would like to make the motion to approve hiring, that this district approve hiring Larry Teis, Lawrence Teis.
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 T-I-C-E.
I'll get it right. Go fish it with me a day, I'll get it right. And that we give him a contract that would be agreeable in close session that quarter. But I'd like to add one more thing and this is the only part I don't understand that you Frank, when you contact other individuals in districts about individuals and especially a person of Larry's character, that when you call up that district, that knowing they're losing a fantastic person, that they would say, no, you can't trust him, no, he's not worth your time, you know. I would say that if I had a great person.
I say that myself. We get to know each other quite well over the phone.
That was a fair motion.
No, no.
Do I have a second to that motion? Brenda, I'd like to second that. Do you have any further comments, Ron?
Should I? No, we've said enough great things about him.
Okay. Thank you. Brenda, do you have any comments? Tom?
Yeah, I guess I had poured a little cold water on the situation here. I guess I feel I have to say this. Several months ago, when we went through the budget crisis and the layoffs, there was a tremendous amount of public concern about administrative costs and we all know what we went through in the public hearings. And it was my understanding that when there were opportunities through retirement or resignations to look at administrative positions, the board would be actively involved in trying to find alternatives and trying to reduce those administrative costs. And I realized the administrative leadership team, which is a group of administrators, looked at this and felt it was necessary to hire, and I guess I don't feel that we as a board have sufficiently looked at alternatives to justify filling the position at this time. So I'm going to vote to abstain and that in no way reflects on the candidate and I certainly am impressed with everything I see on this resume and application, but I'm going to abstain because I don't think we've really looked sufficiently to see if there are alternatives.
Thank you, Tom. Any other comments? Questions? Seeing none?
Well, I think I'll comment on behalf of the administrative team and myself as well because that is true. We did talk about dealing with the first vacancy that came along and trying to leave it vacant. But when the first vacancy that came along was a high school principal's position, it was really difficult to leave that position vacant. And knowing that, and I've said this before, but I will say it again, last year, coming into this year, we eliminated an administrative position. We combined Mr. Clipple with HR at Bigway. And next year, you're going to have two opportunities to deal with vacancies in the administrative ranks. Several people that I spoke with seem to think or feel or believe that that consideration should be made more at the central office level than at the building level where, I guess from their perspective, the fundamental work and leadership in the buildings takes place. So, and I think I've said all along that especially in the high school building, we need to have that triad of leadership at this point in time to fulfill the obligations and responsibilities that are there for those students. So I appreciate your comments and perspective, but I believe that we really need to move forward with this particular.
Kurt?
Just to maybe put Tom's mind at ease, I think it was when I first, just before I got on the board, the board decided that with changing the high school to a nine through twelve, that it was very important that they have an added assistant principal, meaning two assistants and a principal. And I guess I feel comfortable with the idea that we're continuing having two assistants and a principal. I don't know if that helps.
Thank you, Kurt. Any other discussion? Seeing none then, we will be voting on the motion to accept Larry Teis as the associate principal. Roll call please, Lori. Um, Jeff Peterson?
Aye.
Louisa?
Aye.
Lynn Zunder?
Aye.
Ron Bane?
Aye.
Kurt Ecker?
Aye.
Carrie Kahler?
Aye.
Brenda Mamer?
Aye.
Tom Muller?
Abstain.
And Pat Bird?
Aye.
That motion carries. Larry, I wouldn't let you to come up and just say a few words if you would like to since you came all the way up. Just impart a minute or two of your passion to the board.
I want to apologize. I mean, we have Hannah strung out on sugar right now.
We're all kind of there doing it.
She's trying to navigate, she didn't get a nap today, but anyways, I just want to say thank you and I'm very, very excited. We had a long, long tour this afternoon of the school building and facilities and met a lot of great, met a lot of great people. So I'm very excited and very, very, I'm energized to be involved with people that I've met and I think that I'm going to be a huge asset to your administrative team. You talked about the triad and the triangular work at the high school and I'm really, I'm excited to be involved and I'm excited to be on board, so thank you very much for coming here. We'll see you guys July.
Well, thank you, thank you very much for coming.
They're going back to Kakana tonight?
Yeah, except it's a little boring, so.
Thank you so much. It's nice to have you to come and meet up. Good evening. Okay, anything else?
One more. And as part of my narrative report under item D, the last sentence, I'm requesting, requesting as we have before, if you go to my report, item D, the last sentence, I have requested the board authorize administration to offer contracts to individuals who have been recommended by those interview committees with such offerings to be brought to the board at the July sixteenth meeting to verify such contracts and salary amounts. Because we will have four weeks between now and the next board meeting to deal with tech ed position, library position. We don't want to leave people on a string for a month because they will go someplace else.
Lynn?
I assume that this motion to authorize administration does not in any way negate board members being seated on those interview committees that might arise?
None of them. Do I have a motion to authorize administration to offer contracts?
I'll make a motion that the administration be authorized to offer contracts to individuals who fill vacancies. I think we should put it.
July sixteenth?
Okay.
And we will make, we'll request the same motion from July sixteenth to August, whatever, and then we'll do it just one month at a time.
Okay, so between now and July sixteen?
I have the date and kind of a motion here. Are you comfortable with it? What you have? Well, I have, you can use that. Is there a second to that motion? Ron?
I second that.
Any further comments, Jeff?
We've done it in the past and Frank said it makes sense for us to do that, so we are able to fill vacancies.
Ron?
Not only that, but you're looking for the best use of time, efficiency is what you, if you see a good person, you don't want to diddle and dole, you gotta, you know, give them a commitment.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none then, we are voting on the motion to authorize the administration to offer contracts to individuals who have been recommended by your interview committees and will be brought to the board at the July sixteenth meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
I think you do a roll call.
Roll call again. Lori, we're making you work tonight. Louisa?
Aye.
Lynn Zunder?
Aye.
Ron Bane?
Aye.
Kurt Ecker?
Nay.
Carrie Kahler?
Aye.
Brenda Mamer?
Aye.
Tom Muller?
Aye.
Jeff Peterson?
Aye.
Pat Bird?
Aye.
That motion carries. Nothing else?
That's it.
Purchases and leases policy, I don't believe we have any from this meeting.
We have nothing.
Who's that sugar?
I'm not sure about having a picnic, right? Too many sweets. Okay, desserts after the meeting next time. Item S, consider milk bids for the two thousand two, two thousand three school year. Roxy? I think we all in our packets received your bid recommendation. There was a, two pages taken together.
It's just real simple. Kemp's came in and added a bidder. I recommend that you, yes, operate, they've been a provider in the past couple of years, have done a nice job.
So they are currently our providers and have been. Are there any questions about this or is anyone ready to make a motion?
I'm just going to make the motion that we accept the bid from Kemp's.
Is there a second to that motion? Kurt?
I'll second.
Any discussion in the meeting? Kurt, anything?
Pretty strange.
Any other questions or comments, Jeff?
I just, yeah, I have a question on the bid comparison sheet, Roxy. This says that this includes coolers at several of the schools, but not all of them. I'm just curious.
We own, some of our own stores, we own. Some of them, we have coolers in some of the schools, some of the schools we don't. Some of them are going off buying them. They provide a cooler.
I see. Okay. Can we sell ours and have them provide the others? Would make it up.
Louise?
I just had a comment or a question. I was amazed at how low the prices were. How can they afford to do that? It just seemed like you can't buy at a grocery store for that. That was amazing to me.
Quantity. You don't buy that much at the grocery store.
But they put it in a small box. That's expensive.
Any other, Ron?
Well, Louise, actually the price of milk is lower than what's quoted here, but one of the things that I'm interested in seeing though is years back, there was a company and that's who you dealt with. Now we're looking at two former company names on per bid. And so it's almost getting confusing of who is who now. Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we are accepting a bid, so we're doing another roll call? Are you ready, Lori? Okay, voting on authorizing Kemp's Marigold Foods to be our milk provider for next year. Lynn Zunder?
Aye.
Ron Bane?
I'd say who was an aye.
Kurt Ecker?
Aye.
Carrie Kahler?
Aye.
Brenda Mamer?
Aye.
Tom Muller?
Aye.
Jeff Peterson?
Aye.
Louisa?
Aye.
Pat Bird?
Aye.
Thank you very much, that motion carries. Consider facility use for after-school daycare opportunities. This is the agreement. Karen isn't here to see this. Patty.
Mr. Colston?
As most of you know, we have an agreement like this with Good Samaritan, Kate Goodrich, we've been doing it for years. Started out charging a fair amount more money than that, ended up charging less money as the years went on because they weren't making it profitable. This is a service for parents who have kids in these schools. At Kate Goodrich, they have a morning program, a preschool, both pre and preschool program as well. Out here, they're talking about just an after-school daycare as an extension to the daycare they have now at St. John's out in Hamburg. They're going to continue that one as well because of a big enough demand that they don't have room for it. You see that the price is about half of what it is at Kate Goodrich. There's a little more than half as many kids, but there's about half as much use to them because they're not having a morning program. So I'd like to have them do this. All the languages then, gone over with myself and Mr. Tulstee?
And it follows the Good Samaritan contract?
Yes, ma'am.
Did you have anything to add?
A couple of things. When I spoke with Jay Tulstee about this contract, he indicated that there are a variety of outs for us under various circumstances, so that if we need to divest ourselves of this contract, we're able to do that. Secondly, I think it was at the meeting yesterday morning, there was some comment about daycare needs in the community is escalating. And I think this is another good opportunity for the school district to partner with local individuals or organizations to improve that need or fulfillment of that need in our community.
Are there any questions by board members? Any agreement? Jeff?
I was noticing the starting times, what time do the elementary schools dismiss? This is three to six and I didn't think that the kids were necessarily auto or building by, auto back building, hanging out by three o'clock.
It's pretty close to three and this will give, it's a few minutes, it'll give her the opportunity to get in and get organized or whoever's going to be facilitating the program for her.
And I don't know if there's been any problems, I guess apparently not because we haven't heard of any, but at Kate as far as, should I say, limiting their access to other parts of the building and I'm wondering if that's going to be a concern here too, because I know you can't use them for some of the types of gates that were used in the past.
No, we've talked about where they can use and then where they, when we have programs at night where we're going to use the gym, for instance, they're going to use the library. So we talked about the flexibility of using that building and we'll monitor that.
I'm just thinking as far, how many people are they going to have?
I think about fifteen.
Fifteen kids and how many adults?
Three, I don't remember exactly.
As long as we got the building to, you know, in some fashion, if we find that the kids are running around that building because there are over places that they can go.
Ron, did you have something?
Just glancing through this one and on maybe the third page, number eleven, religious instruction, practices tenant shall not provide religious instruction, all permit, religious practices. practices to be conducted during this program. Is that standard, what's that Kate them too or not?
It's the same contract would change, yes. And even though it's called St. John's Christian Care, it's just a daycare, they don't, they don't do religious instruction through the day.
Yeah, I, I can understand that, but then on the news, I think it was Mozeni that just voted for their board to open each meeting with the pledge and a prayer. I don't know what they said apart. It was a two thing, so that they added to their boards for opening, which I thought was unusual.
Tom.
Kind of skipping through this, on page three, number ten, uh, she indicates the tenant agrees to indemnify maps from and against any and all liability claims which might be made against maps. Uh, page two, under insurance, there, they said that the tenant shall have, uh, coverage of not less than a million dollars. I guess my coverage is, my question is, in this day and age of lawsuits and what have you, is a million dollars enough to indemnify us against liability?
I guess personally, at this point in time, I believe that it is. Jay Tolste felt that it was adequate because, you know, he did question that as well, putting it into this package as, as was with the Kate Goodrich package.
The state-owned million dollars, a small change in lawsuit language.
Anything else, Tom?
No, that's all.
Any other question?
I was gonna say that that's, that's actually probably a fairly standard amount that they would ask for in this type of contract.
There are any more?
We're named as additional insurance, so an entire million dollars would have to be used out of their policy before we would be touched.
Do I have any more questions or discussion, and do I have a motion to approve this agreement? Lynn.
I move to approve this agreement for daycare establishment and April Grove as presented.
Do I have a second to that motion? Louise? I'm seconded. Any other discussion, Lynn? Louise?
No, I think it's a helpful, helpful thing.
Any other comments or questions by the board? There you go. Lori, roll call will on the acceptance of your new, the new daycare of April Grove. Okay, Ron Bane.
Aye.
Kurt Echols.
Aye.
Carrie Kaler.
Aye.
Brenda Mamer.
Aye.
Tom Muller.
Aye.
Jeff Peterson.
Aye.
Louisa.
Aye.
Lynn Zander.
Aye.
Pat Bird.
Aye.
That motion carries. Thank you very much. Agreement's approved. Greg, are you up again for the insurance?
For those of you that were on the board last year, you remember that we did go out to bid our insurance package, not our health insurance package, but our liability, workers' comp, boiler, crime, errors of emissions, auto, all of those kinds of insurances we bid last year. And for the first time in a long time, we didn't have Wassa Insurance carrying the whole package, or Wisconsin Association of School Boards, fine, I guess I should say, carrying the whole package. They carried boiler and they carried workers' comp, but the rest of the, um, plan went to somebody else who turned out to be a better financial dealer, and the board chose to do that. Um, that and the wake of September eleventh chose not, or it turned out not to be such a, a brilliant move. Um, I talked to Jeff about this quite a bit, at being an insurance person, but I had the statistics, maybe Jeff could give to us, how many went down after, after Hugo, about eight or ten major insurance companies went down after that. Several of them went down after September eleventh, um, one of them being a company that carried our liability insurance. And, uh, so I was pretty excited for quite a while. Frank and I had some talk wrenching talks, and Jeff and I had some. And, uh, I decided at that time, our neck wasn't sticking out there very far. We had one claim, about twenty-three hundred dollars, um, one of our plow trucks backed into a pickup truck of somebody else. And, uh, I chose to pay for that claim out of our pocket, basically, and we're in the process of getting reimbursed for that, but I chose to do that instead of having, um, that person hang out there for several months not covered. So, out of all of the schools that had this going over, the insurance company, we turned out to be very lucky in the fact that we had no claims. That company has since switched over to a different company, so it's now again a stable company. Um, but in the process of being unstable, Frank and I talked about the fact that maybe we should bid this again and see if we could get a little better carrier, even in a bad market. Like, as you know, it's a very bad insurance market right now. So at that point, I put, I put up all those insurances I was prepared again, and we are in the process right now, um, tomorrow, I, no, day after tomorrow, of receiving all that information with our, our consultant that we're using. She will put that all together on a spreadsheet like she did last time, and I will have that information in front of me to make a decision about who we will have carry our insurance. The problem is, is because of the timely, untimeliness of how this all happened, the information doesn't come to me until about the sixteenth, she'll have it on about the fourteenth. And we, uh, need our coverage reinstated by July first. We don't have another board meeting between now and that. So what Frank and I are asking of you tonight is to allow us to make that decision in your stead, and then have you approve it on, in your July meeting, as to who the carrier will be for our insurance.
Any questions, Greg, or discussion?
Lynn, um, how, how is it currently split? You said what kind of?
Currently, it's boiler, and workers' comp is with Wisconsin Association of School Boards through Wassa Insurance, but it's Wisconsin Association of School Boards. Everything else is, well, property is through the Wisconsin, um, Property Trust Fund, and, uh, then everything else is through, well, now it's called County Mutual, but the company that went down was going over.
What is it called now?
Uh, County Mutual.
County? Excuse me.
It's the insurance company that covers many of the counties in the United States.
Okay. The, the only thing is, just as an aside, um, at some point, and maybe it would be appropriate through the finance committee, I'd like a workers' comp report and our history, our mod, whatever it's called, mod rate.
Modification factor.
Factor, and kind of a history of that, perhaps, a five-year history. I, um, at one of the last workshops we were at, they said it's real important to pay attention to that, and, um, I don't think we've ever had a report. Maybe it's appropriate at committee level.
Over the last five years, that would have been pretty boring, the last year. It hasn't been boring, unfortunately.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
So that would be something that maybe you bring to the finance committee. Put that on, you know. Kurt?
Could you give me an idea of, like, the total cost for the whole package? Or just, like?
I'll, I'll look in the budget.
We have to see your.
I can get it to you. I don't, I don't have the budget. It's, it's, it's projected to go up about twenty-five percent this year. As a matter of fact, we got a, we got a letter from, uh, property insurance that figured a twenty-five percent increase for next year and a fifty percent increase for the after.
For all?
Property insurance.
Anything else, Kurt?
No.
How many bids generally do we get, Kurt?
Well, we started out, we started out with about four people that were going to bid. Um, one, one of the locals dropped out, and I just, I don't know, gave that to you last week, Frank, maybe one last week?
Yes.
So I think there's probably three left.
And last, and last year, when they, when they did the bidding process, you picked the lowest bidder?
We picked out of four of the lowest bidder. We split, we split workers' comp and boiler off from the rest of them.
I was just gonna say, there's only, probably only about three or four companies that do business in the state that would even, you know, insurance, you know, districts, so. And, uh, like Greg said, with the hard market and the fact that you've got a limited number of companies bidding, we're not in a very strong position. It helps that our claims have been pretty good. That's really something to look at.
Did you have a question, Lynn?
It's been answered.
My claims have been very good for everything but workers' comp. And, and previous up until this year, they've been pretty good for workers' comp too, but we've had a couple of big workers' comp claims this year. And I, I don't know, I mean, how much the board knows for all of that, but, um, we manage workers' comp both, uh, here and there, through me and other people that are involved, Roxy sometimes, whoever. And, and, uh, Wassa Insurance as our overseer of our carrier workers' comp insurance monitors workers' comp, uh, the people that are in the hospital or getting surgeries are, you know, very, very, very closely. So it's a very closely monitored program. We have a couple of employees right now that have workers' comp claims that aren't very happy with our workers' comp company because they're being investigated. And I, I had to explain to them, you know, in a very nice way, that that's part of what workers' comp job is, is to make sure it is a workers' comp.
How did we do this year? Have you done your report yet to know whether, on the premium, whether we came out, did we owe more money or come up even?
Uh, no.
It's not report time yet?
No.
Any other questions, comments, discussion? Anyone wish to, we?
I would make a motion that Greg and Frank, thank you, Frank. I move, uh, that the board authorize the administration to complete the bid process and determine the carriers for these insurances and to bring those items to the July sixteenth meeting for verification and final approval.
Thank you. Do you want to have a second to that motion? Jeff?
I'll second.
Do you have anything for you, Louise? Jeff, do you?
Our, our coverage expires June thirtieth, and so we have something in place for July though. Unless we, unless we all, we vote on it sometime between seven and I guess that's our answer.
Were you gonna second, or did you have a question? Did you have your hand? Any other discussion on the motion? Being done, let's just stick with the roll call. You're doing good, says Lori. Okay, we are voting to authorize the administration to complete the bid proposal and bring it back for verification and approval at the July sixteenth meeting. All those, sorry, go ahead, Lori. Kurt Echols.
Aye.
Carrie Kaler.
Aye.
Brenda Mamer.
Aye.
Tom Muller.
Aye.
Jeff Peterson.
Aye.
Louisa.
Aye.
Lynn Zander.
Aye.
Ron Bane.
Aye.
Pat Bird.
Aye.
That motion carries.
So on. And to help expedite that process, I've had conversations with both John Lovell and Don Begoot, you know, about the recommendation that I made to at least take a step in creating this process in a more formalized fashion. And I had ten points, um, on my cover sheet that, uh, I distributed day early in this mailing process so that people might have a little more time to think about questions or issues. But I feel quite comfortable in the recommendations, establishing the parameters for the beginning, the new beginning of the Leadership Technology Committee, giving a little more responsibility and a little more clarity. And to be set within parameters of budget, for sure.
And I, um, since I'm on the, um, the tech, the ad hoc tech leadership committee, um, there've been some pretty spirited emails, um, since the report that from some of the other people on the committee, the teachers, and John, and some things he sent out, and Chris Graham, our community member who was on the original committee, who I think is going to be on this Leadership Tech Committee. And, uh, kind of the interesting thing is that this report really sparked a lot of conversation and good thoughts and some good, you know, really already working on things and issues, are discussing them and being excited about them, which I think is, is a great offshoot of the committee process. Any discussion, questions about the recommendations on the next?
I guess there are just two things, is that, as I look at it, I may know it's not. Um, I was a little bit concerned with the, the size of the committee with eleven voting members running, if that would start to get a bit unwieldy, and wondering what, uh, considering two, uh, non-administrative staff as opposed to three at each level. Um, I'm just, you know, curious to see some thoughts, what your thoughts might be on that. And then, uh, point six, uh, as far as having community members, I assume that these are non-voting members.
Yes.
So strictly advisory.
Let me respond to your first part about the three from each level. And the reason that I, I used quantity three, uh, is, has to do primarily with the fact that not always are all three from each level going to be able to get to a meeting, and if you have only two, you, you thin yourself out maybe a little bit too much with other activities, or if we have some other, uh, job circumstances next school year, and we try to do some things after school hours, we might not have any of them. But, and so it gives us the latitude to have, uh, a good representation there. And it also is more easily dealt with in terms of a, a three-year rotating pattern with people. So you get a new person every three years at each level.
Okay.
And about number six, do you feel the need to put non-voting in?
And I, we, we could put non-voting in there, that was the intention. The only voting members would be the, uh, people listed under number one. But we think it's really important to have a Chris Graham, or a Scott Schultz, or a whomever, you know, on that committee for their perspective and wisdom.
I guess you mentioned non-voting specifically in the other point, so it probably would follow suit to put it in six. You have it three, and four, and five?
I would put non-voting after the numeral three.
Okay. That kind of covers them. I have one comment on the wordsmithing piece of it, and number nine, um, we have responsibility to set work orders. I wondered if maybe establish work order priorities and procedures to ensure we set out what they're doing a little bit.
That would be fine.
Anybody else determine?
I'd say it's not.
I have a stat.
Same.
Tom.
A couple of things. One is, I did have the opportunity to show this to Scott, and he seemed impressed, he thought he was, was favorable, I think, to all the ideas here. I won't speak for him. He's hoping to be here tonight, who was not able to, unfortunately, but seemed to like it. Uh, one idea, this was something I thought, not, not necessarily that Scott was suggesting this or recommending this, in terms of those three appointed from each level, yeah, would it make any sense to maybe appoint one, uh, of each of those, of those three levels, I'm thinking, because there may be some particular individuals who really would like on the committee who have the background and experience, and you want to make sure you get them as opposed to elected process?
One of the reasons that I used elected is because that's the process we use with the Leadership Council in general. Uh, you know, we could do that because this is new, but it would then not fit the form that we typically use with the, with the other groups. So we have that level of consistency. And we may also have some other issues with appointing people relative to reimbursement.
Anything else, Tom?
No, definitely.
Okay. Any other comments or discussion or suggestion? Lynn?
I just wanted to ask, um, maybe I'm just missing it in the wording. How, can you just give me an example of how these two committees will relate? The ad hoc, oh, no, the, um, the LTC and the current Technology Committee?
Well, this, this will become.
It will become that.
The Leadership Technology Committee.
There will be only one.
Okay. And the standing committee of, um?
Is disbanded.
Will? Will be entwined or enmeshed or reconstituted?
The committee that we appointed has been disbanded. They did their charge, they gave us the pink sheets, and they are gone. The current Leadership Technology Committee, which exists, will become this committee.
Okay.
So there won't be two committees doing the same thing. These will be the new parameters for that Leadership Technology Committee that we currently have.
And how does that, in fact, change the face of that Leadership founding committee? Was it a smaller committee? Was it a larger committee? How, you know, what will the differences be?
The difference really comes in the item number seven, probably, in that the board is going to delegate, authorize them to. is going to delegate, authorize them specific responsibilities. And before that had never been established or enumerated.
Okay.
So that they can function at a little higher plane.
I think the feeling was also that if by giving this committee some of these duties and charges, that they would get the people to work on them because some people volunteered for it and then got a little frustrated because they felt like things weren't coming through them and they, you know, their decisions weren't going anywhere. So this gives the committee the ability to set some direction and really make clear policies for all of the technology in the district. So if you're on this committee, you would have, it would be the equal. You would have a voice in how things, how policies are starting to be set and making suggestions for those and procedures to be those. Tommy?
Just a comment. And reviewing these vouchers on a biweekly basis has kind of made me aware of just how much money we spend on technology. As an example, this last one, the teach money that went out was about almost $36,000 just in that short period of time. So I'm assuming that this committee will be involved at least in some way with an awful lot of money that gets spent by the district in terms of at least purchasing things.
And some of that money, the teach money, which typically is $140,000, $160,000, depending on the year and what's going on in medicine, is designated for technology. We're not going to spend it on tables, you know, classroom tables, that type of thing, other than technology issues. So, you know, that really does come under the purview of that committee to use it wisely. And that's probably another reason that I have the makeup of the committee as I do because it broadens the base of decision-making.
Lynn?
You triggered a thought, Pat, when you were talking about policy. I think it's, it's critical that any of our supporting committees or our ad hoc committees be very grounded in our policy. And so surely any recommendations for change would again come and rest at the board level.
I agree with you. And actually, it's nice to see that in the suggestions here, they're asking them to follow some of our district policies by number and so that they do weave that into what they're doing. And certainly, they're not going to be setting policy, but following policy, making procedures. If they come up with a good suggestion, they can bring it to the policy.
Absolutely.
Any other discussion or questions? If not, we are looking for approval. Okay. We are approving the makeup of the Leadership Technology Committee as presented. Is there anyone who wishes to make a motion to the...
I'll move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation regarding the restructuring of the Leadership Technology Committee.
Do I have a second to that? Brendan?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Any other discussion, Jeff?
I'm barred, Frank, for jumping right on it and taking some steps to get going on this because it obviously is a very important part of what we do in our district.
Brendan, anything? I think it's a facet that we spend a lot of money on, and the more organized fashion we do it, the better off we'll be.
Any other discussion?
Just real quickly, I also put in number 10 that the ad hoc committee did not have listed, but we talked about an awful lot. And we want to make sure that the acceptable use policy which exists gets a thorough review and is brought to the Board PR Policy Committee for enhancements.
One of the other nice things, I think, to see this is for the committee, which involves several citizens as well as staff members, to see that their work is going somewhere. This has become a piece, and we are working on it and taking it to the next level. So it shows that we did appreciate all of the efforts that... Any other discussion on this? Okay. I think we can do this without a roll call vote. All those, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Anyone abstaining? Thank you very much. That passes. Moving into the schematic of policy here. Ad hoc policy committee recommendations are first. We have a couple second reads and a couple third reads. We want to take the student class conduct, policy and procedure 5430. Who chaired the ad hoc policy meeting last of the four participants, or was it a group activity? Louise, were you the chairperson?
I was that day.
Seems like a long time ago. So student class conduct, this is up for a second reading. It is attached to our packet. Is there anything remarkable that you can think of in terms of further comments, Louise?
We did, or did we not, change the word class at the top? There were just some detail with the wording at the top, but I can't remember if this is the way it was or if this is what we changed.
We added, on the, on the policy, we added class, and on the procedure, we deleted code of and added student and deleted room, so we agreed the segment, both items.
There is another, another policy that is student conduct. So this is specifically for the class.
So you were clarifying that. Was that Lynn, which you were going to?
Absolutely. And just wanted to add, Louise brought up under number, letter A, number two, the importance of what a class is as opposed to classroom. So that was real important. Many activities that do not necessarily fall within the parameter of a classroom that our, that our students have responsibility for.
Any other questions or discussion on how the procedure runs?
Excuse me. When you brought up that number two, where's that now? While in school, under the control direction of the district, you know, now while in school, does that then include the broad room, like school forest or school trip? Okay.
Tom?
Just looking at page four, there, there's some new language. And as I recall, that there was some human concern about dialogue between the teacher and the administrator. And to me, that looks like a very good change. There should be some interchange and some discussion about what happens in any given discipline situation. And I think this guarantees that there will be some, some discussion and hopefully some agreement. But at least there will be some guarantee of some dialogue in trying to understand what's being done. So I think that's a very good change.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion on this? Okay, it is up for a second read. Coming out of committee here for, we don't need a motion. Those motions are from committees, so to speak, it's for the second read. So all those in favor of approving policy number 5430 and procedure number 5430 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Anyone abstaining? Okay, one down. Second read, procedure 6451 for elementary school and middle school grading procedures. Was there any other discussion on that? There was great deal of discussion once again.
We would like to forward this to those schools and along with the policy would be the procedure for requesting a change in the policy if there was a desire to change the policy.
So you're talking about creating procedures to do that?
The poli, well, the policy to, to request a change in a procedure exists. And if there is going to be a change to the procedure, then that procedure to change it correctly will be done.
So are you indicating as a committee that you...
This is what we are recommending right now.
You want to go ahead and approve this as a second read, the way it stands in the packet?
Okay.
Is there any discussion on the second read of this procedure as it stands in the packet?
I just want to clarify that, well, this was tough for us because the junior high, the middle school has implemented this, the high school implemented this for this year. And in fact, there never truly was a policy change. So as an ad hoc, our responsibility was to review existing policy, and we felt that it should stand as it is with some clarification and including the clarification sentence of teachers may give plus or minus grades for improvement impetus, but they will have no bearing on the numerical or the student grade point average. And we want to stress that. We didn't want the confusion that we'll, we can no longer give plus or minus grades. Not true. They will have no numerical bearing on a GPA. And that was real important to clarify. So this is what we're bringing you from committee.
Any other discussion or comments on this procedure?
I'd just like to echo Lynn's thoughts that essentially, we really didn't want to create a policy, a new policy in our committee. We just wanted to clarify what was in effect.
Brendan?
I think the members of the committee received a copy of a letter that I sent to the middle school administration with this attached and copied also to the high school administration so that they are aware of this fully. And as I indicated to, I think, maybe just the members of the committee, all of the members of the administration know that next fall, as an administrative body, each of us are going to cozy up with the board policy book. It will become a standing item on administrative meeting agendas. We will go through the whole policy book to make sure that there's no misunderstanding about any particular policy and that if there is a desire to change a procedure or a component of a policy, that, that will be taken through the appropriate process and ultimately be brought to the appropriate committee and thence to the board for whatever alteration may be recommended.
Okay.
Well, because there is a lot of interest at the high school and I believe at the middle school, and a lot of teachers are using pluses and minuses, I believe that they will look at going through the process and making a recommendation to change this. So just because we accept this read now doesn't mean that we may not be looking at changing this next fall for next school year. And to be honest with you, I will encourage those people to do that.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, then, this is coming out as the second read, procedure 6451, point in one, from committee. All those in favor of approval of this procedure signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Anyone abstaining? Okay. Moving on to the third read, we have policy 5472, student suspension slash expulsion. I believe that stands alone as exhibit four.
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I don't believe that we made any changes to this at our last meeting. I think it looks the same. Is there a change?
If you'll remember, at the last board meeting, I recommended that this be put back to committee because Jay Tolosty and I had a discussion about a need to add a couple of components. And those components are more specifically number six and seven on page three. And as we went through the reread of the statutory language itself, you'll notice item one and five have been revised to regurgitate statutory language related to suspension expulsion processes. So this is statutory language.
Tom?
Just got a question about what you just mentioned in number six there. The age of 16, I thought was interesting and kind of struck me. Is that statutory requirement?
That's verbatim from statute.
Interesting.
Any other question, discussion, comment? Okay. Seeing none, we are looking at a third read, recommendation coming out of policy committee, ad hoc policy committee for policy 5472. All those in favor of approval of that policy signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Anyone abstaining? Okay. Moving on to the next bank of third reads. I think they are all intertwined. There are two new policies, a new policy procedure and the deletion of two procedures and an exhibit. Is there any discussion on that from the committee, Louise? Or any comments? No? Did we change anything on these?
No, no, we did not. I was going to reinforce for Tom, Greta Rush and RWXB are very comfortable with the language.
Thank you.
And it's awkward. You know, there's no doubt about it, it's awkward, but life is awkward.
It's a tough, it's a tough topic.
We did discuss that at the meeting.
I see that we also have next to third, final read, which means we do want to be done with the policy. So this would be coming from committee as a recommendation for the third reading. Let's approve the two new policies and then the policy and procedure and then do a motion to delete the others. So I'm looking for approval as recommended by the committee for policy 5533 and 5533 point in one procedure. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Anyone abstaining? Okay. Then there would be two procedures, 5533 two, 5533 three, and an exhibit 5533 headline fact sheet to delete. Recommendations is to delete these from the policy book by committee. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Anyone abstaining? Okay. The ad hoc policy, must they have anything further? Okay, are completed. Policy and PR committee has a first read of a policy and procedure on food service management. And I don't, who is the elected chair? Kurt? Great.
Thanks to Ron, I am chairman of the policy in the PR committee.
Okay. Congratulations.
And I think we could almost call it a first and final read on food service management policy that Roxanne brought it forward to us. Changed, changed some things to, more in line to what actually happens. And there's a policy, or the procedure is, I guess, probably the most important part. Would you prefer to comment, Roxanne?
Just that there's a need for change because what we're doing now isn't working. So we need to tighten things up a bit. And hopefully by doing what's supposed to hear in the procedure, we'll be able to have parents pay on a timely basis. We'll be able to get rid of some of the debt that is owed to us. And we'd like to implement this this fall as possible and have this information go out in our parent needs letter in September.
Okay. Are you making an recommendation from committee to move this to second read, Kurt?
Personally, I think we could make it and hopefully approve it now. Just to tell you things.
Is there any discussion or questions, Jeff?
Yeah. Right, so when I look at the policy, to me, the third paragraph is procedure. And in respect, you actually have, I think, all of that stuff spelled out in procedure. So I would recommend deleting that third paragraph out of your policy. I want you to chew on that for a minute, and I'll bring up a couple of other items in the procedure.
Kurt, do you have any immediate thoughts on that, or Roxanne? There was a reiterating of procedure.
Basically, number one of the policy. Let's see, one, E.
You'd probably have to add a point to say that we'll use a debit current system. But other than that, the other, the other rest of it is about maintaining funds, and that's laid out in the procedure already.
Jeff still has the floor, but Lynn, do you have a question?
In this case, Jeff, I think it's okay to have two or three sentences that are general, kind of the umbrella for the more specific spelled out procedure. Because if I was, I'm just trying to think of the use of a policy. I'd go to the policy first, and I'd...
just trying to think of the use of a policy. I'd go to the policy first. And I don't think, if you take it out, there's nothing about the structure that the debit card, there's nothing about prepaying, and that there's no charging. So I'm okay with actually leaving it in, just because it's kind of like, if that was the one thing I'm, I'm new to the district, how do you operate your school lunch, I'd pull this out before I'd ever read all this. So I guess I'm okay with it.
You would get a mailing from
Exactly.
Food Service laying out the procedures. You wouldn't get the policy.
I know. But if I was one of those kind of people that check a policy, I think, I just think it needs to be, it's not a big deal to me.
Roxanne?
I'd like to have it in the policy because sometimes we need to explain to parents, you know, why it's important for them to pay. And sometimes by having it in the policy and stating that you must prepay, you must maintain sufficient funds, there is no charging, it really has teeth then. You know, I can say, this is a board policy, this is part of our policy, it's a debit card system, it's not a credit card system. You know, you don't charge seventy-five dollars to a hundred dollars worth of meals and then pay off a little bit at a time, get back to zero, and then do the same things again. We've had problems with this in the past. So if we can state it in the policy and explain how we're going to go, doing that in the procedure, I think it really helps parents understand the process. And we have, we have bills to pay and on a monthly basis, we cannot continue to carry the debt that we have. We have right now twelve thousand dollars worth of outstanding debt that parents haven't paid from this past school year.
What was your second point, Jeff?
Okay, well, if you do that, then I'm wondering, when you, in the last sentence of that paragraph, you say no charging meals or additional food purchases is allowed, do you need to say when there is a negative balance?
And that's in the procedure.
But then I would include it there as well, because otherwise you're implying that you can charge.
Negative balance.
When there is a negative balance.
But, but.
Or anyway, this is.
Okay.
Okay, there's never, I mean, they can never charge a meal, correct, Roxy?
That's, that's what we like
Yeah.
The policy to read.
But that's not.
If and when it happens, we'll notify the parents and let them, you know, allow them seven days to make a payment into their account. Because chances are that will happen. We're all human. You know, even though we call, we send statements home, it's, you know, it's hard to keep on top of that. But at least we give them the opportunity and give them a week to make a payment into the account, you know, if that does happen.
So I think the point is, it is a debit card. We don't ever charge meals. Is that the point you're trying to make?
Exactly.
Did you have another point on the procedure?
In the procedure, just wordsmithing, I guess, at the very beginning, I'd say family meal account payments, statements, overdraft notifications will be done.
In other words, payments into, you want to say instead, family meal account payment?
Payments, statements. And notifications shall be.
Anybody on the committee have a question about that? Or are you comfortable with the change in taking payments into out, starting the sentence with family, just say family meal account payments, saying the same thing?
Does the, in number, in item B, you're talking about payments sent to school, do you receive payments, like, you know, mailed directly to the central office or anything?
Yes, we do.
Do you need to address that someplace, or?
I thought that was in here somewhere.
We do, under A.
Under A.
Under A.
Pailed or dropped on, okay, so payments. Okay, so B is sent to schools. Okay. Item D, is the staff allowed to purchase on a daily basis also?
Yep.
And staff. Do you want to add staff then?
I think we should, or else it's addressed someplace else where you were talking about the staff.
Do you think, Rox?
Yes, we could add that.
Students and staff.
Right. And I would hope that we aren't having problems with staff having negative balances. But then I was looking at point seven and wondering if, and it should be addressed there as well. We hope we wouldn't have any negative balances. But, I mean, if we're going to do the procedure, then I think what should be included in there?
It doesn't just say students, though, it just says the final day of student attendance.
Student attendance. Okay. But that's a different day than staff attendance, so.
It doesn't make a difference if it's the final day of student attendance or the final day of staff attendance.
Okay.
That's the kind of thing.
All right. And the last item that I have was at the top of the page under, so paragraph eight. I'm wondering if we shouldn't, at least at like the high school level or something, if the students shouldn't be informed, or saying they're informed with their parent guardian.
Jeff, where, why are you?
At the top of page two.
A.
A.
Noticeable to inform parents or guardians.
Because I, you know, I don't see if we're talking to students. The student may or may not know what the status of the account is. I would think they might, but, just the same, I think they're maybe, you know, wondering if it's some fashion we should.
We, at the middle school and at the high school, we verbally tell them we have cashiers at the end of the line. And if students are negative, they're told that they need to bring money tomorrow in order to pay for those meals, that they need to make a payment or inform the parent that they need to make a payment. So we verbally do that on a daily basis.
And technically, the only students that have legal status are some of the seniors who have reached the age of eighteen.
Right.
Otherwise, the parents are the ones that.
I understand a parent is responsible, but I'm just thinking that if, you know, a parent says, well, yeah, I'll take care of putting some money in there, and they don't do it, and then it comes up there and all of a sudden, they don't have the money in the fund balance. You know, but as long as they're being informed.
And at the elementary schools, we actually send out a memo to staff and to principals and the elementary secretary informing them of students that have linked one accounts, the accounts are closed, and that they can't eat. If they come to school with no money in their account or a lunch from home, we do provide the sandwich of the month in carton milk for that child. We don't let them go up all day without.
True.
And hands over here, Louise.
I was just going to comment, going back to the question about including the staff. I think they're included is not enough. In number one, it says all families who have students that attend the MAPS district and all district staff shall have a family meal account. And then the staff is indicated in one C and then over in six and nine as well. I think they're in there.
So you don't think you need to.
I don't think we need to.
In D.
No, I don't think we do, actually.
Maybe. I should just add that.
Just have a question about the notification. Okay, high school students.
Where, what.
Oh, okay, under number three.
Number three.
They're notification toward the bottom of the three. Are they just notified by phone? Is that?
We do it by phone. We don't send statements out to the high school students. We can generate statements that go to the school, to the elementary schools and to the middle schools. They're given to the students. The students are supposed to take them home and give them to the parents. We've tried to do that at the high school when I first started, and they never get home. They never get home. So the phone notification system is the most effective way to contact parents. And we verbally, again, tell students that you have no money in your account, you need to bring money or make a payment tomorrow or have cash on hand to pay for those meals. But the phone notification system is the most effective for the high school.
I find I don't get as many notices at the middle school at all either.
Right.
And I guess I was wondering, down the road, it might be something, if the families, once our website is up and that perhaps a parent could, you know, Skyward does have that capability, but again, it does cost money. Maybe that's something we can do down the road. But not at this time.
Tom, did you have anything, everything you had written in the letter?
If in fact, and I'm sure that we don't, but if we do have staff that are in arrears, is that something that, what are the legal rights of management to, I don't know, she wages, but actually get reimbursement from their paycheck for that? I mean, do we have a policy, do we have a cutoff date? You know, if you haven't paid up your meal thing, we're going to take it out of your salary.
Humble pie usually works well the first time around, and then we take the next legal step by giving them a notice that they have a financial obligation. And we'll push it as far as we can.
Okay. Is it working if we have any problems?
It works. Up until this point in time, it has worked.
Rob?
Now that Lynn brought that up, and I'm glad your answer was the way it was. We just passed the student conduct and procedures and so forth. And one of them was profanity. I was wondering if, did you ever have an unruly student with a foul mouth when you told him, sorry, we can't charge anyone?
No, never.
Okay.
We try to deal with those situations as tightly as we can. It is difficult. It's very difficult. But usually you only do it once, and then the money comes, you know, from the child, with the child the next day, or from the parent the next day, and it's put into the account.
Okay, so we're looking at, from committee suggesting we move this to a second read. I'm hearing that the food service policy, we're leaving that paragraph in, everybody's comfortable with that the way it is. Moving to the procedure, changing the first sentence to start with, family meal account, payments, then statements, overdraft notifications. And the only other question is, under D, do you want to include students and staff? Roxy thought that was okay. Okay, so that's how it stands. Okay. Brenda, just one other suggestion. I'm just wondering, apparently it's a three dollar or less balance. If we raise that a little, it might give the parents, families, a little more window of opportunity to get the money. And three dollars is like, better do it today or tomorrow. You know, especially if family has a couple of kids. That's, you know, just raise the bar on that, you know, put it ten dollars.
I would, but some families only make ten dollar payments. Some families have just minimal amounts in there to cover for the week.
Mm-hmm.
Depending, again, on how many.
How much students, yeah.
In the household or in the district. I would suggest to try three dollars or less. And if that doesn't do it, if we have some difficulty with that possibly changing, you know, in the future, go with the five.
Any other discussion?
I just, I got that phone call once, Brenda, and it's a very nice phone call.
Well.
Just stating that your family lunch account is, I think it's.
Overdrawn.
No, low, lower or something. And please send appropriate. It's very, it's a very nice phone call.
You know, just.
And it's hard to keep track when you have, you know, three or more kids or two kids or whatever in school, and they're all eating different. And it's very hard to keep track sometimes, but.
Yeah. Now we got that wrong. Okay, ready to vote on policy and procedure thirty-five twenty, coming out of committee as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Anyone abstaining? Okay. Now, where are we with the finance and personnel?
Where are we with this as a first read or waiving the first read to second? I want to make sure there's clarity about that. I, Kurt suggested that, but was that part of the motion?
Okay.
I got lost in the discussion.
Yes, I think so.
I believe that he indicated that he was comfortable with that. Are you, are you indeed comfortable?
I am very comfortable with that.
Is there anybody that has objection to that being a second read? Okay.
That'll be fine, as long as we all understand that that's part of the motion to waive the first read, with the second read, which is motion to approve that policy procedure.
Okay, now, on the finance committee one, Mr. Harrington has something. And what do we want to hear, for finance or policy?
Well, let's do it this way. If this review of the charge for the finance committee started with the finance committee months ago, had some revisions done to it, went to the policy, the PR policy committee, who have a second read on it. And since they met the next week, the finance committee re-met and rethought some of the items which are now before you on this green sheet. And Tom, I think we've, hopefully, we've accurately reflected what the discussion was. Then, if you want to, I'm going to give these to Kurt.
Did you want to comment on it, Tom, from the finance committee meeting of possibly why some of those suggestions were?
Yeah, I guess just a couple of them. The biggest one, I think, that we cut out, or perhaps the most significant one, was number ten. Initially, the finance committee was charged with reviewing financial implications of contract proposals. And again, Lynn and Kurt, please comment your opinion as well. But it seemed to us, as I recall, that the whole board does that. And therefore, to make that a job for the finance committee was redundant, because in fact, the committee was going to, and I'm sorry, Pat was there as well and helped with that. I think that was probably the biggest change that we made. Number eight, I believe we took out and made recommendations to the Board of Education. Basically, what we're doing is reviewing them. Actual recommendations about short and long-term borrowing would come probably from our financial officers and the superintendent. We simply would review that, but not necessarily make any recommendations. And I guess, number six, we took out requesting a monthly report be made to the committee by the superintendent or his or her designee. And then we were going to say, well, when appropriate. And then we decided we probably didn't need that at all, but simply review whatever legal matters might come before us, assuming that those would be brought to us by the superintendent in time we had. I think those were the three beginnings that we conceived.
Took out nine. Why did we do nine? I think because it was.
That was actually before.
That was taken out before.
Initially taken out.
That was the first go around.
Any other comments from Lynn or Kurt on the policy?
Tom did a fine job.
Any other comments from the policy committee based on the changes?
The policy committee just basically gave it back to the finance committee. We passed the buck. Guess where it's going?
If there, was there any other discussion, Jeff?
I was just looking at the, at the first point, and I was wondering, let's see, preparation of annual budget. Is it annual budget and financial? Is financial studies separate from the budget? Is that the intent there?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, annual budget or.
For my time, but I assume.
Or other financial studies. And then I guess the other one, I was wondering, well, the other word I was maybe a little concerned about was audit. Said, to me, it implies something deeper than what we are actually doing. And in effect, we're reviewing the vouchers. And I'm wondering if that's the terminology that should be put in there.
And number four?
Number one.
Number one.
Oh, yeah.
Audit.
But it's a strong term.
Audit, yes.
Better term.
Does everyone in agreement to place that with review?
Reviewing vouchers.
Review bills and purchases, or do you want it to state vouchers?
We've been using the term vouchers synonymously with purchases when we talk about the approval or authorizing members of the finance committee to approve payroll and vouchers. Vouchers relate to our purchases. I want to let Pat talk about that. Talk me out of my thought.
Well, bills would be not only the vouchers that are prepared for individuals for payment, but they could be the bills, the gas company bills, the electric bills, open bills, transportation bills that don't necessarily come with a voucher attached. It could be monthly bills or recurring. It could be monthly bills or recurring bills. I think that's, that's why we've got the word bills in there so it covers both bills and vouchers.
Okay.
So you're thinking review bills and purchases and-
Fine.
Rather than changing vouchers or anything?
That's fine.
Okay. Any other comments, discussion, questions? Pat, anything from you? Comfortable with it?
I think that the finance committee is going to be a very, what would I say, a very strong, reliable committee that our board can lean on so that they can predict our next year's budget.
No?
We do have one of those eight ones.
Thank you, Ron. Any other comments on policies? Okay, this is actually coming as a second read from the policy PR committee because they had it, they went to finance.
It's going to be as amended by the finance committee.
Finance committee, okay. So we're looking at a second read, motion to approve the second read from the policy committee as amended by the finance committee.
And amended by the board as a whole.
And other amendments. Okay. How we do it, Lori?
I don't think I have that one.
Okay, Tom.
I'm just going to say whatever you just said.
Okay. This, this again would be a motion coming from committee, so it would be coming from Kurt as chairman of the policy committee for, to approve the second read-
As amended.
-of policy eighty-eight thirty-one as amended by the finance committee-
And.
And-
Members of the board.
And amendments.
Members of the board.
And members of the board. We do better that time? Yeah, thank you. Okay. All those in favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Anyone abstaining? Okay, we're done with the policy.
I'll give you a quick question. Does this then go back to the policy, does, we are in the policy committee or?
No, this is them. We approved it, it's done, it's policy.
So a second read.
Yep, we did the second.
What?
Okay. Mr. Wade, can you consider ESA grant application, which we did have in our task as well?
There are a couple of handouts. Would you step that one that way? Would you step this one this way? You may have heard last December and January on the news, President Bush signing, I think it was about the 12th of January, the new Elementary and Secondary Education Act. And-
They always use this.
Okay. And that's a thick one. And I could give you a three-ring binder on this that's entirely full and I could probably give you more. And I'm going to give you this because out of all the articles, I could, I could completely overwhelm you because I can tell you the truth, to a certain amount of overwhelming, I am overwhelmed by what's going on with this too, that there is so much to learn. This will give you in ten minutes probably the best information you can have and I just, and if you want more, I've got plenty more and just feel free to call me up and I'll get you anything else you want on this. I shouldn't say anything you want. We're in the middle of lots of rule writing with this. This will not be complete until fall. So I actually can't give you all the answers you want right now because it's not really all done. I can, you know, the, one of the things I liked about this is the title, a new federal role in education. Typically, it's been the, um, the area of states and we've always talked, it's responsibility of the states. The federal government has made a shift in their ideas on their responsibility in education. There are four major pillars of this law. Accountability, flexibility, research-based, and parent choices. And you're going to hear over the next few years, I'm going to be talking about those pillars and I'm going to tell you a little bit about each of those as we go through the application. This is a strange issue to approve. There's three parts. This tonight is part one, where I'm asking you for the approval to send it in. It's due June 30th, as you can see on the top, it's our only board meeting until then. I will be working on, after I get this, to be honest with you, these numbers just came last week, Thursday. So, you know, Frank and I were talking and finally they showed up, two of the, the biggest two numbers, Title I and Title II-A, those just came in last week, Thursday. There's new things coming in every day. I am taking all this and developing a rough plan that would be going in by June 30th. This is an extremely rough draft that I'm giving you now. It's even, it's going to be somewhat less rough when it goes in June 30th. Then we have the fall to really smooth it out and make it a good plan. So it'll be coming back to you again sometime in the fall. In the actual document, it talks about 2003. I have a feeling they're going to be asking for it in January of 2003 and that's why they've got that date in there, but they're saying we're giving you the fall. And the other thing is they understand that not all the rules are clear until fall and they have to give us that information or that timeframe to do this. Accountability, flexibility, research-based, and parent choices. I'm going to go through some of this. It is significant. You're going to see major changes throughout the countries, the states and throughout the country. Let me just tell you about the accountability first. There's going to be testing in the core subject areas from grades three to eight. There's going to be, in other words, all kids will be tested, well, I should say ninety-five percent of the kids have to be tested in grade three through eight. We're going to see that by, in twelve years, they're saying twelve years after June 30th, all students will become proficient. All students will graduate from high school. This is, this is the wow from, from this. That we're going to be disaggregating data by income, by racial groups, by ESL, by special education. Just off the top of my head here. We're going to be, all groups are going to have to show gains. All groups will have to become proficient. Special education is going through, the idea, legislation is going through reauthorization this next year. They're expected to come right along with this. Lot of, lot of accountability. With the accountability though, comes flexibility. We have the opportunity for the first time to use our money in ways we've never had before. We can take half of the money in Title II, not Title III, half of, half of the money in Title II-A, half of the money in Title II-D, half the money in Title IV, half the money in Title V, and switch it amongst the titles. Talk about flexibility. We, you know, we can shift money all across the board. We have significant increases and I'll go through that. They're giving us more money to do more things, but they're holding us much more accountable, they meaning the federal government. Let me just go through a little bit more on the, the, the research base. This is the toughest part right now. The DPI is asking, the federal government, well, what programs are research-based? What are you saying is research-based? You can get into a debate. Does one study mean it's research-based? Does it have to have multiple studies to show that it's research-based? Does it have to have, how much time does it have to have in order to say it's a research-based program? There's a lot of new programs going on out there. We're not sure on those answers yet. That's a lot of the what-ifs that are still coming down the road. Parent decision, another one of the pillars.
Excuse me, excuse me. May I, I want to interrupt before you go on to that next part. It's accountability stuff.
Okay.
And I want us, as a group, to remember a year ago or two years ago, when we were starting to go through the curriculum mapping and benchmarking and standards and alignment and doing data retweets and all of those things, we are nine miles ahead of most other districts when it comes to being able to deal with this accountability factor because we've gone through all of those steps and we've got an excellent base, thanks to Rich and Don and all the other administrators who have spent time dealing with those issues. So now, out of the blue, comes something that isn't real tasteful for us in this ESEA thing because there's a lot of work, but we're way ahead of the game-
Absolutely.
-compared to many other districts.
You know, I'm giving you the tough facts on this, but the reality is compared to other districts, we're in great shape. You know, in Wisconsin as a whole, is a great, is a state in great shape when we talk about this. But even still, there are some things on here, you know, that, that's got a lot of people shaking their heads, how is this really going to work? But, you know, we're, we're accepting it face value at this point and we're making the plans to proceed. I'm going to talk about parent decision-making. And you'll see in here, if a school, if a subgroup, remember, say the low-income kids in your group, your school, don't do very well on, on a sub-part of that test, and this is the hardest part of the law. They don't do well in, let's just say, social studies, one area. You can be labeled a school in need of improvement. And by seeing, don't do well, what they're going to be doing is they're going to set the bar at a certain spot. We've got twelve years to get to a hundred percent proficiency. If we don't make the incremental moves, we're going to be, each school, we're going to be labeled a school in need of improvement. It's very easy to be labeled a school in need of improvement because of one subgroup. DPI did a quick study and said that, just taking the definitions they know now, seventy percent of the schools would fall into that because there'll be one subgroup. Wyoming did the same thing, they found eighty percent. Louisiana did the same study, they found ninety percent. So this is a nationwide issue. We're going to have, it's going to be eye-opening and interesting to watch this process. But again, we're in probably the best shape of any, anybody that I know. If, if school does fall in needs of improvement, there's a lot of parent decision-making. We have to have, I shouldn't say if, first of all, there has to be parent plans for every building now. Parent involvement plans specifically to encourage parent involvement. The research is really clear, when parents are involved, schools do well, kids do well. And so this is following that research. If on the other hand, we have a school that's in need of improvement, parents will have the option initially of shifting kids to different schools. Now, that's going to be interesting to watch, especially if seventy percent are in need of improvement, what does that mean? You know, I don't know. Boy, that's a lot of shifting. If in the next year, a school continues to be in need of improvement, then we, the parents can use some of the Title I money for tutoring services. So that would make major shifts. If a school goes into another year, there's a major restructuring of the school. If it goes into like a fifth year, the state takes over the school. So, I mean, there's significant issues of accountability. But I got to tell you, some of these things were in the previous law too and that really never, you know, was enforced. And so I never saw anything actually come to that level. If you read the 1994 reauthorization, it was in there too, but we'll have to see on some of this. Okay, I'm just going to quickly go through this for you. Provisions, we do have something where we have to deal with homeless children. That's on page four and we have Paul Clippell's name as far as the coordinator for that. This part has a lot of strings attached with very, with absolutely no dollars. So that, this is going to be kind of interesting for the communities to have a lot of homeless kids. Basically, what this says is we have to try to meet the needs of the homeless child in the school they reside in and try to, no matter where they, you know, homeless is tough to say where you're going to end up on your feet, but to try to keep one thing consistent for that child and that be in the school setting is basically what it's trying to say. We do have coordinators for everything. I'm on page five now. I'm mainly the, I am the total ESEA coordinator and then I have some of the subsections. There is a technology part where John has, John Gravel. We have a certification of debarment, which may, my understanding is there's one company in the state of Wisconsin that was debarred and we cannot do business with them, but some states have quite a few. I don't know which one it is yet, but I'll find out.
What kind of companies?
Somebody who has violated federal rules and they've said, you are not getting any more federal dollars. Is that what basically that means? So we can't use that. And I don't know which company it is yet, but the private schools are in this just like before. They have the options in all of these categories as well. And they are very involved. St. John's, Trinity, St. Francis are very involved. We've had meetings in the previous, two weeks ago. The next is the consolidated plan narrative. It's, you know, you, this is a little different, the second sentence, it says the department recognizes that applicants-
Which page are you on, please?
I'm on page nine now. I'm skipping over the private school one and says, the department recognizes that applicants will not be able to develop and submit a fully formed consolidated plan by June 30th. You know, that's a new kind of sentence. Normally, I have to have everything in place, but they, this is such a significant issue, they're saying, take the fall and do it well. They know that it just can't be done. I mean, you know, a lot of these figures came out before and school is already out for many districts, so it just can't be done. I want you to see the overarching themes though. Substantial, measurable, positive impact on student achievement. The target here is set at student achievement. Closing the achievement gap between subgroups of students. They're expecting all subgroups of students to do well. Substantial, measurable, positive impact on teaching, on increasing teacher capacity and quality. A huge impact towards teacher quality. They know that schools cannot improve without teacher quality improving. So there's a significant issue on in-service and staff development. Ensuring that every school is safe, drug-free, and conducive to learning. Obviously, the, the brain research is real clear. When a child is afraid, there is no learning. Very simple. Employing effective integration of technology into the curriculum and instruction. There is a little bit of technology dollars and I'll go through that and I'll tell you how the initial plans are for using those. There's not significant amounts to improve curriculum and instruction though. You'll see there's $12,000 for us, $13,000. Well, you're not going to make a pre-K-12 shift in technology with that, but it will have some impact. And then continuous improvement, refining, improving, and strengthening program. This is right out of the business world. Continuous improvement. We, we just aren't satisfied with what we've got. Always continuous improvement. And then you can see here, we're going to, you could, this is what the plan has to look like that we submit in the fall. It has to have each of these areas with consolidated plan means. We're not taking these in little pieces, we're doing it as a whole. We're looking at the, the parts as a whole. We do have to do needs assessments. We will have, all the requirements need to be addressed, closing the achievement gap with the assessment, high-quality teachers. We have to cover every one of these areas. The next is page 11, it says, what this is, is the issue of shifting the dollars. And we will have the opportunity to shift dollars and we may do some of that, we may not. We, we don't know about that yet. I'm expecting that we will do some. Just want, this is, this is, I, I just put this in to keep me focused, but this will be the Title I budget that goes here. That's all on computer and needs to be worked through on a computer basis. And I, I don't want to start rough drafting that because once they grab a hold of that, it's really hard to make a change. But I'm just going to go through, Title I, okay, went up about eight to nine percent approximately for us. So we'll increase a half FTE, which is very significant for us in our district. Title II, Part A, went up approximately thirty-four percent. And this is a hundred and seventy-four dollars, a thousand dollars. Huge increase for us on teacher quality and this was the old Clinton dollars in class size reduction melded in to Title II, teacher principal training. So we will have three FTEs to lower class sizes from this monies, these monies, as well as in improving staff development. And this all has to be part of our plan. I had a hundred and eighty thousand here, it was a guess at the time when we had this typed up. Go ahead, Kurt.
This will be, can, can maybe help or, hmm, this should be a question maybe Ron would ask, but those FTEs, will those be awarded to our non-sage schools or how will you decide?
That, that, I, as Paul Clippell is the elementary coordinator, I defer to him on that. And basically, generally, it's done, again, we're pointing towards student achievement issue- issues, and we have to, we, the issue of equitability is going to be gone. You know, we just have to get used to the fact that if everything's equal, um, it's not going to meet the law requirements, because the issues will be, go to where the need is. And the need is based on student achievement. So lower test scores will drive these funds.
Okay.
Versus, geez, we got equal number of kids here, and here, and here, let's just divide the money up equally. That's typically how we're, we've been doing it in the past. We're going to see less of that in the future. So people will be screaming regarding the equitability, but as far as needs, we have to address the needs on lowest, lowest achieving kids are going to get the dollars. So, and that's where our accountability is. They're not going to ask us, how equitable are you? They're going to ask us, what are you doing for those low kids?
Okay.
And then we have to report on that.
Of course Kurt sparked a question by Ron.
Thank you, Kurt. Uh, thank you for thinking of me. Um, this is also, though, as government works, the reverse happens. In other words, then we start channeling a certain group of kids to a certain school.
It's going to be a, I can't picture all this, I, you know, I, I picture, um, a school with low marks in a certain area, and then parents saying, well, I'm going to send my kid over to that school. And then the dollars go with that school. And then, you know, it, I just see it back and forth, and I'm just not sure, dollars leave a low performing school? Well, then what do you do? How does that get better? I'm not sure. Because, uh, we will be using Title I dollars for transportation, which we've not done now. Or we'll have the option to use Title I dollars for transportation, which means you're taking it away from low achieving kids. But it's meant to be, uh, like an incentive to not be low performing, because you'll lose your Title I dollars towards transportation. Yeah, kind of odd.
The reverse of this could be true, that if, with Don's help and the board's selection of highly qualified teachers, and we're just sailing along and-
Hey, and, and if the achievement scores come in, you keep the flexibility, you have tons of options, you can do some pretty neat things. Yep, that is true. You know, and we will lose flexibility if we have low achieving schools. Um, but anyway, this is a significant increase for us, this thirty-four percent in the Title II, on improving quality, teachers and principals is basically what it's about. And again, that's, they know that, that, you're just not going to get a quality school without quality teachers and principals. And I just threw in a hundred and eighty thousand, this was printed up prior to the, this coming last week, but your mailing had to go, had to have something. Technology, this is new, we have never had Title II Part D, brand-new, twelve thousand nine hundred dollars for technology. We have to have a technology plan. We already have a technology plan. We may have to do some updates, and I just basically threw in here, we're going to have some software or workshop dollars to increase our technology plan. The thought that we, we don't have a lot of guidance on this, these dollars, but let's imagine we have twelve thousand to play with a little bit here. Um, the thought is, what kind of technology will you need in order to make decisions to carry out this plan? What technology will you need to gather data on kids? What kind of technology will you need to do number crunching? Or to assess kids mid-year? The notion of waiting till the end of the year to see how the plan is working is not good. We want to be able to assess kids, is there some technology that will help us keep track of how kids are doing? That's how this technology is probably going to meant to be at first, is supporting the technology needs of the big consolidated plan. There's not really going to be money, you know, directly for kids, but would technology make the Washington School teachers better able to judge what they need to do next? You know, with their next steps? Um, and then here's that planned budget. Uh, Title III is also new, English language acquisition, acquisition. Um, we only have twenty-two forty in that, and we're required to do a, um, or, we, we have to go with CISA nine in a consortium. Anybody under ten thousand dollars has to do consortium. So we're going to wait to see how that works out. Um, they are trying to do, do the number crunching themselves, and basically, it looks like they're going to help us assess the English level of each child who needs this assessment. Now, how far will two thousand two hundred dollars go? I mean, it's, I don't know how many kids that'll test, but that's the initial plan right now. Um, next is safe and drug-free schools. This, we lost money because we were considered a high-needs school, so we lost significant monies, um, in safe and drug-free schools. This particular year, we're working on thirty-four thousand dollars, so it's a significant issue. We had the thirty-four because we were considered a high-needs school. Um, so this will be a little tougher, but, you know, obviously with September eleventh, huge issues in safety, um, and helping kids feel safe in the buildings. Huge issues on, on that, and this one is really strong on the research-based, um, activities. Um, go ahead.
I am confused. When, if we're a high-needs school, do you mean high-needs academic, and then so we get cut in safe and-
High needs-
Or are we a high-needs school because we're unsafe?
No.
I lost you.
It, it has to do with income.
High needs, income?
Yeah. Income drives, drives a lot of what's happening here. And, and if you look at, I mean, I don't know where the Merton community is, they're right underneath us, they don't get any Title I. They don't, they get a little bit in this Title II, they don't get anything in Title II-D, they're nothing in Title III, they, I mean, tiny little dollar amounts, they're, it's a high-income community.
I, I am understanding. I, when you said high needs, I thought you meant because we had a big drug problem, a big safety problem.
No.
No, high needs, economic.
Economic. It drives a lot of these dollars.
Economic, yeah.
Yeah. Um, but anyway, they took out the high-needs status that Title IV had, that's just gone. So we lost out on that particular one. Um, Title V used to be what I used to call Title VI, innovative programming, and this one also increased about twenty percent, which is significant as well. Um, and the flexibility was always strong in this, it's even more, um, I mean, more flexible. Uh, so I predict schools will put money toward, shift money towards these dollars here, because there's so much more flexibility here. Um, and you can do pretty much anything you want with them. But, uh, so we get more money, much more accountable, I'm telling all, this is a standing item on administrative leadership team meetings. We will have this on agendas for a long time, because it's going to be a long learning curve in understanding how this works. Much more flexibility, much more accountability. I'm telling all the principals now, tell me how you're going to measure what you're spending the dollars on. Tell me which kids you're going to target this to, and how you're going to measure it. And, uh, let's think about that now, because next May, I have to send those reports in on how did we do? I have very few reports now to send in on this particular one. This will increase significantly on our accountability issue. And as you can see, years down the road, it's going to have some big impacts as well. So it's going to be an interesting process. Like I said, we'll all go through it together, and like Frank said, we are in great shape for this. We're going to do as well as anyone else, feeling really comfortable with it.
Lynn, did your question come?
Well, I, I always am trying to constantly struggle with measurability and accountability of something as, um, I don't know, it's nebulous, I think it's very hard to show measurability in improvement in quality of people, teachers and principals. And then as I'm reading through these, I'm going, wait a minute, we have this wonderful thing we've done with teacher evaluation.
Yes.
We have this, um, connection with Point, uh, where we have a cohort group of teachers that are going through that. Yeah, we are in better place. Um, the technology piece, when you were talking about it, Rich, I'm going, are we going to actually, one thing that I'd love to see in this area is to, to look at Excel and Access as, as an opportunity to train, um, administration and principals and teachers in that area, because it's, there's such good, and, and maybe there's a program, software program that they're thinking of, but I think it's an opportunity to, to use some of our technology, um, monies for training, and how we look at statistics and improvements-
Yes.
And measurements. Because we are, in education and educators, we tend to be, as Pat always teaches us about, the touchy-feely, and of course we've improved, we, we think we're better, and when in fact, it's got to come down to some number crunching.
Well, and that's the other side of the data retreat.
And I think we're getting better at it, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
But we have a ways to go.
And this August, we do our data retreat.
Yes.
You're, that is going to just skyrocket in, in importance because of this. We're going to be making, and the site plans we have in place that come to you in the fall, well, those, that data retreat should drive that site plan.
And I appreciate that, because I, and I've asked for that, because I do like to see the numbers.
Yes.
And I do like to see the improvement, and I think it's, um, if the public is demanding it more and more-
Absolutely.
And now you're hearing that the government's-
And that's exactly right.
So I think, I think it's an exciting time.
Good. Brendan?
Um, just relating to that, I realize the WKC tests are back, and should we not expect to hear about that until after the data retreat, or?
They have, the scores have been embargoed until June twenty-eighth. Because there was a glitch in the company that was doing the scoring, and some of, and some of that data didn't get processed the way that it was supposed to have done, they're pretty close time-wise, but it'll, it'll be out at the end of the month. We just got a letter on it today, I think.
I guess so is my understanding, middle school was going to have it sent with the report coming.
We thought we were.
Can I clarify that? The individual student results have gone home, okay? But, uh, we graph the district-wide results, Frank has a copy of those, but we can't share those with anybody yet. As Frank indicated, these have been embargoed information till the end of the month. So, but we intend to bring that back, just as we do annually. But I just wanted to say two, a couple things about ESEA. One, Rich is right on the mark with, uh, I think we need to engage this as an exciting time in education. It's a very formal step on, on a federal level relative to the quality of our performance. And we understand that's good, okay?
Yeah.
And that, when we say, well, then what is Maryland going to do? But we are so set for this, because of all the things that we've, uh, put in place, um, we're going to respond just fine. And then if there's anything that we question in the legislation, then our role really ought to be to influence the design of that at the state level to have it make a little bit more sense. And then relative to the technology piece, really, Rich and I sat at that meeting together, and it's like the engaged folks were talking to the folks at the federal government because they were saying exactly the same thing. So it's, everything's really coming together nicely with that.
And as far as in, in impacting the state, uh, Don is on one of the committees that works with the state, and so am I, I'm on the Committee of Practitioners, which actually help write the rules for the Title I legislation. So, um, we do have that impact here as well, which is, again, these are, these are, I've been on that committee for three years, it's never had the importance it does now. Yeah, but, and, uh, it's just kind of neat that, uh, all of a sudden, you know, we're in the central spotlight, because we're writing, the federal government has a lot of flexibility in the rules that the state can choose too, so we're impacting that as well, so.
And tonight, you are looking for approval of this preliminary grant application?
Exactly.
Is there anyone still with questions or wishes to make a motion? Lynn?
I'm, I'm moved through all this preliminary process and step in the grant application for ESEA.
Do I have a second to that motion? Tom?
Have a second to that motion?
Any further comments, Lynn?
Just one, as an aside, working in manufacturing and heavy industry here in town, um, we have monthly reports on cost of quality and on-time delivery, and there are charts, and there are numbers, and it's fascinating to me that it's, that it is, um, we are running a parallel thing here with education, and high time, I might add. Because it engages and empowers line employees to want to do better, because the information is shared with all. So I'm, I'm excited about it.
Want to go to Tom first? Tom?
It's just nice that the federal government now is not only making mandates, but is willing to pay for them, and they do it.
Well, let me-
Maybe the state will say that they-
I gotta tell you this, though. Uh, this came in with an eighteen percent increase across the board, uh, and people said they'd never seen anything like it. President Bush, though, in his next budget, proposed two-point-eight percent. And now he's under a lot of criticism for getting the legislation in and not funding it. So, um, initially, it was funded significantly, and now the issue, now it's back to the debate, he's proposing two-point-eight percent. So, I, I just have to temper, there's a lot of politics going on up there.
But the precedent is there.
The precedent is there, absolutely.
We want you to do this, and we're going to help you pay for it.
Exactly.
Frank? One of the parts of paying for it relates to special education in particular, and those who are also going to have to be reaching these levels. And the federal government had set a mandate years ago of a seventy-plus percent reimbursement for special education programs, and we're a third, not even a third of that. And those are the students that are, you know, that fall into some of those at-risk categories that we're going to spend a lot of time with.
Don, did you-
Yeah, two last things. One, I, I think we should all find it reassuring, too, that the state also receives a huge amount of money in ESEA, and their, their plans pretty much will, will be parallel to ours in staff development and technology, and teacher training and administrative training as well. So that, that's good to know we'll have that support there as well. And I also wanted to say, Lynn, it's just great to hear you challenge us as a board member to take our data and our statistics work to the next level, because that's exactly what needs to happen.
Ron?
When you said the next year's proposed budget, are you saying a two-point-eight percent increase?
Mm-hmm.
That sounds like a tremendous amount, but if you're talking baseline budgeting, it don't sound like anything. But zero line budgeting, that's a tremendous increase.
Well, it's-
It really is.
Yeah, I, it, it can be. Considering, though, what the, the expectations are going to actually incrementally increase with this legislation, um, there will have to be some funding issues addressed. I mean, it's not going to be that easy to implement all this, tremendous amount of training.
Oh, yeah. But I mean, it's not-
Initially, it's a good start, obviously, I'm not saying it's not, but there will have to, we'll have to be examining this very carefully, and seeing what the funding requirements will end up being.
Tom?
You said four, four pillars, accountability, flexibility, choice, and I'm sorry, what was important?
Um, research-based.
Research-based, thank you.
Okay, did we do okay on that motion, Lynn? Um, I, yes, we did, okay. All right. Um, we are voting on a motion to authorize, uh, preliminary grant approval, or approved preliminary grant application. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Anyone abstained? Okay, that's done. You want to stay there and you've got to do your hint, start all-
Well, if you remember the last time I was here, I got to give credit where credit is due, Pam has handled every bit of this. Frank put my name behind it, but, I mean, she has handled it, I know where my limits of expertise are. And you approved it, uh, last time, and this is the formal approval of this, um, loan with the, what, what do we call it?
State first one. There's perseveration on my part, actually.
What does that mean? What do you mean?
Putting your name down twice in a row.
Oh, oh, okay.
Okay, okay. So we are looking at the blue sheet that was in your packet, which is the resolution of school board authorizing loan. Do we need to read the resolution, or do we just move on to the resolution?
This is the fourth one, you, somebody could read it.
Anyone care to read the resolution? School board authorizing loan? Any of them? Carrie?
No.
Oh, you read it?
Sure.
The whole thing? Ooh. Go for it. Am I supposed to be emotional? Just start, resolution. Resolution of the school board authorizing loan. Resolved that we, the members of the school board of the school district of Merrill Area, Wisconsin duly assembled in meeting according to law this-
Twelfth.
Twelfth day of June two thousand two, approve and authorize that application be made by the president and clerk of the school board to the board of commissioners of public lands for a state trust fund loan in the amount of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. trust fund loan in the amount of $250,000 for the purpose of constructing in addition to the school district's Head Start and Early Childhood Building. The loan is to be repaid within 10 years from the 15th day of March preceding the date the loan is made. The loan is payable in annual installments with interest at the rate of 4.50 percent per, what is that? AM, from the date of making the loan to the 15th day of March next and thereafter annually as provided by law. Keep going. Be it further resolved that there is levied on all the taxable property within the school district of Merrill Area a direct irrepealable annual tax sufficient in amount to pay the principal and interest on the loan as they become due. Be it further resolved that we, the members of the school board of the district, school district of Merrill Area, Wisconsin do intend to use our exemption authority within the purview of section 67.12, how do you put that?
Parent.
Parent 12E2G, Wisconsin statutes for the application of this loan. Thank you, Carrie. This is a resolution, so it needs some discussion.
Resolutions do not need second.
Any questions or discussion on the resolution? Tom?
Would either Rich or Pat or someone clarify the idea that this is actually part of the tax levy, which it suggests on here?
Well, I'm paying it off with the federal dollars, but, I don't know. I suppose what that would mean is, if I wouldn't do that, there'd be a fallback, or what? Okay.
If, if we didn't have the federal dollars coming in that repay or basically balance that part of the budget, it would, it would go back to the taxpayers.
So what you're saying is, this will not be something the taxpayers will be responsible for?
No, it's coming out of my Head Start expansion budget. Okay.
Ron?
I firmly believe in this, and I firmly believe that the federal government will fund this. The only word that is really scary, and you didn't quite hit hard enough on it, Tom, that's this irrepealable. Once we start this, that means that, hey, we always got more money coming in. It's irrepealable. And I don't like that one bit, the way that's worded. I really don't on this one.
Until it's paid off.
Right. But the word irrepealable in government tax increases means what it says.
Any other discussion or question, comment? Sing, Lynn?
I guess the only thing that I'd like to see amended here is somewhere, the focus seems to be that it is on the taxpayer of our district to pay this, when in fact, there's no language in here saying that it's federal money. And I'm wondering how we can weave that in here.
We can't.
We can't. And I need to have that explained to me before I can support this. Even though I understand it, I wanna hear it. Maybe I don't understand it.
This, this is sort of like state statute language. This is language from the state trust fund, and they determine the criteria by which these loans are allocated and approved.
So they're saying, we'll loan you the money, but you're gonna-
If you will guarantee, we're going to guarantee to them that we're going to repay this loan within 10 years, and that if we need to, we will use local tax dollars to do that.
But you're telling me-
Let me just give you another one.
I mean, I understand that part.
Actually, I'm paying you the money, and you're paying it.
Mm-hmm. You meaning the federal government's money?
Yeah, but Head Start, I'll be giving the money to MAPS. MAPS is building the building, this is MAPS building. This is not the federal building. This is your building, and you're gonna put that up for me, and I'll pay you for it.
Out of federal funds?
Out of federal funds. And then you'd make the payment.
And the reason-
And it doesn't really, from their point of view, they're not concerned where it came from. They just want you, you to make the payment.
Okay, I guess my question is, why is it a 10-year loan? If, when will you be getting the money?
Well, we went into that before. I wanted a longer one, but then that would've increased the interest rate and a lot of more hoops to jump through. And with my ability, the amounts of money that we're able to generate with these dollars, I can pay it off in 10 years, if not sooner.
And the reason we're doing this is because we need to pay the construction, we, but it's already been authorized to be funded federally, but it's just because the monies don't come necessarily in a timely fashion from the federal government that we are doing it this way.
Well, they, they don't give me that much money. I have, you know, that I can't, I can't make a one payment. They don't give me a quarter of a million dollars.
I see.
My grant is $115,000, and I have to fund teachers, I have to fund, you know, supplies, I have to fund a lot of things, but a chunk of that 115 is for building. And so I'll be able to pay a little bit every year. I can't pay a quarter of a million in one year, obviously. Not with $115,000 a year.
All right, so I'm, so what we're doing is a resolution that is required by the trust fund, and I understand that, and we have guaranteed that we're gonna get this back out of the federal monies that you received.
Right.
Okay. As, as an elected official for taxpayers, I needed to understand that.
I need one comment, too. One of the other reasons we're going with this type of a loan is because we can't prepay without penalty. So if Rich has additional dollars available at the end of year two, and year three, and year four, we may have to be able to pay it off much faster than the 10 years without any penalty. So they're flexible that way. They just wanna guarantee that within the 10 years, they're gonna pay it back.
So we could prepay it, yes. Okay, thank you. Good, thank you.
Ron?
Did you get a second?
I don't need one, 'cause it's a resolution. Thank you. Any other discussion, question, comment? Anybody comfortable with this? No other one? Okay. All right. Roll call vote, please. Okay, we'll start with Carrie Kaler?
Aye.
Brenda Maymer?
Aye.
Tom Muller?
Aye.
Jeff Peterson?
Aye.
Louie Shaw?
Aye.
Lynn Zutner?
Aye.
Ron Bane?
For another great Head Start, aye.
Kurt Ecker?
Aye.
Pepper?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you very much, Rich. At this time, can we move back to item D, consider district hireings and contract additions? We missed the recall of our employees.
My narrative, under item D, I suggested that as a result of a large, comprehensive or 21st century school grant to Kate Goodrich, $99,000, we are able to recall that halftime layoff of Jeanne Nino. And I apologize that we forgot to do that at that point on the agenda, but we need to have the board formally move to recall Jeanne Nino from her layoff status.
Brenda?
I move to recall Jeanne Nino from a halftime layoff status.
Do I have a second to that motion? Louise?
I would second it.
Any discussion, Brenda?
No.
Louise?
Glad to be able to do that.
Any other questions, comments? Ron?
Which grade or grades will she be doing this halftime for again? I don't remember.
Tom?
It will probably be in the lower grades, between first and third. She's certified at the third grade, so Mr. Yankee will assign her one of those grades.
Okay.
Jeff?
It leaves us with, what, one, two people that are still on layoff status?
Yes.
One comment. Pam Warland, who was a reading teacher, is on layoff status, and I'm still optimistic that we will be able to recall her, hopefully during the summer sometime when the state actually finalizes its budget, and now we feel more comfortable with the federal government's dollars. Rich just talked about those having been authorized this past week. And the other individual on layoff status is Chris Robinson, who's a fiaid teacher. And it's highly unlikely that we will be able to recall him unless we have a fiaid teacher resign or go away between now and the beginning of school year.
Any other questions, Lynn?
Louise? Just to, to clear things up for me, we called all the, two of the people, but how many of the positions are still, have they been eliminated? I mean, I, I don't think we put those positions back, and I-
Right. We still have a number of sage positions that haven't been filled, and we're, that's one of the things we're waiting on from Madison, and we eliminated a high school social studies, a high school fiaid, the CISA nine, uh, social worker, 70 percent position, district library position.
Those positions are still gone.
They're gone.
So we have still cut the positions?
Right. You know, simply as a, predominantly as a result of retirements that happen to have certifications or, or need for certification that were found in people that we laid off, we're gonna bring most of them back that way.
No other questions? Okay. Um, accept donations, then, moving, oh, I'm sorry.
You need to vote on recalling.
Oh, I, thank you. First, we forgot. No, no.
Vote on it.
Okay. All those in favor of the recall of Jeanne Nino from halftime layoff status signify? Um, we've done, I guess we've done roll calls for all the others, so we'll do a roll call for this one. Brenda Maymer?
Aye.
Tom Muller?
Aye.
Jeff Peterson?
Aye.
Louie Shaw?
Aye.
Lynn Zutner?
Aye.
Ron Bane?
Aye.
Kurt Ecker?
Aye.
Carrie Kaler?
Aye.
Pepper?
Aye.
That motion carries, recall. Item N, accept donations, I don't believe we have any. Under Board Travel, did everyone receive this from WSB on the Leadership Academy? It is $95 for the two-day seminar. A room for one night would be $95 for a single, or $105 for a double. Does look like a very good seminar. Any comments on it, Lynn?
I've attended, it's excellent, and I will approve for anyone on the school board that would like to attend it. It's a very good one, because there's, it's, you have such an opportunity to, to discuss with your peers, and it's really, it grounds you very well in leadership on the board, so I, I'm hoping many of us can attend it.
Louise? I would second the motion and also second the sentiment, because I also went to that last year.
You did, huh?
And not only was I able to talk to other board members from other districts, but board members from my own district as well. And it, it is, I mean, the, the focus of this is good, building shared responsibility for student learning, and the other big one, the Listening Seminar, and how to get anyone to do anything you want almost any time.
Wow. What's wrong with that?
I should go.
Everybody wants to. Okay, any other discussion on the motion? There were motion on the floor to allow any board member to attend this Leadership Academy. Ron?
I, you think it'd be wise to ask who would have intentions of going? I think that would be-
Sure. Is there anyone at this point in time that would, is able to commit to preliminary league wanting to attend? It is July 19th and 20th, it's a Friday and a Saturday.
I mean, it's the afternoon on Friday, isn't it?
I wanna comment on one thing. It seems that they have moved this back. It's not a full day on Friday, and so the welcome isn't until 2:30. So if you're able to adjust your work schedule for leaving at noon, it, it, I mean, I think it's, I think they've done a nice job. They moved it up into the evening. So then, Cindy, you're missing, you'd be, you know, I would get to missing a half a day at work, or maybe flexing the time if your workplace allows that. But it's a, and it, it's, I think it's because it's in-state, and if you can't get away to the January one, the annual one, this is a great one to go to.
And even if you were to miss part of Fridays and be able to do Saturdays, it might still be productive for you, if that's the focus that you're listening to. Show hands of people that might at least be interested in going when they're not there. Are they able to attend, I guess, Lynn? Lynn, Jeff, Louise, Brenda can't do it, Tom, Carrie, no?
Possibly.
Ron?
I know I can't.
Okay, so that's, five.
I know it's the date, it's, yeah.
So you're lucky to have two votes.
Yeah.
Truly.
Yeah, you're right. Cause it's the way it is on the road. Any other discussion, comments, or questions? Okay. All those in favor-
Roll call.
Roll call vote? Yes, sir. Could we have a roll call vote? You're getting really good at this.
Bring out a room.
Sue informing that we would not have any more than 14.
Uh-oh. Tom Muller?
Aye.
Jeff Peterson?
Aye.
Louie Shaw?
Aye.
Lynn Zutner?
Aye.
Ron Bane?
Aye.
Kurt Ecker?
Aye.
Carrie Kaler?
Aye.
Brenda Maymer?
Aye.
Ted Bird?
Aye.
That motion carries, and if you can't attend, then you try to get word to Sue in the next week or two.
The deadline for application is July 16th, which is our next board meeting, but it has to be in on that date, so the Friday before that, I think, is the, well, is whatever that, I don't know.
Okay.
I'll try to do a reminder.
12 is correct, right? By July 12. I also did have an, I'll, I'll maybe ask Frank to make a copy of this and throw it around. I, I was gonna toss it, and then I thought, it's, it's a conference, and it's in New York City, and it's November 5th and 6th, and the cost of the conference is, is quite costly, it's $1,700. But it's a 2002 Business, Business and Education Conference, and it, it's really looking for collaboration. The New Era of Education Reform, Corporate Opportunities to Strengthen Tomorrow's Workforce. And I'm just wondering, I'll have copies made and passed around, and maybe we can discuss it next time. I wonder if we might be able to get a business partner in town that would be interested in attending this as well, or in supporting someone from the board to attend it. So maybe that's something we can think about in pursuit as I pass it on, because it does look interesting. Okay, anybody else have anything for Board Travel? Reports from committee members. Anything else from Ad-Hoc Policy Committee? I think we covered most of that.
Our next date is?
Ron's got it? No, you're on power. Ad-Hoc Policy. Do you know, Frank?
Yes. Which one?
Ad-Hoc.
Ad-Hoc is 8:30 a.m. on July 8th.
8:30 a.m., July 8th. And regular policy.
4:30 a.m. on the same day.
Getting together, okay. 4:30 on July 8th as well. And anything else from Finance Committee?
Could we take just about two minutes and talk about the policy, the Finance Committee getting together the last week of June in order to look at vouchers? Wednesday, or Tuesday, or Wednesday, did you say we're gonna? Thursday?
27th.
What is the date?
That would be the 27th.
27th.
Can you get together in the 27th? You're out of town, right?
I'm gone. So I know one third that's gone. Kurt can't.
I can't.
I can't.
Five o'clock, does that work? Okay, five o'clock.
So you've got that covered?
Good, thank you.
And our next Finance?
What was the next meeting?
Next Finance Committee meeting is July fifteenth at five o'clock.
July fifteenth. Did you have anything else from the committee meeting that you wish to talk about from Finance?
Hopefully so. Any committee members?
Other than if you ever want, if you want to come, this is, again, a good opportunity to review that purchase and lease agreement policy, and that's, we've had some history and some interest in that, so if you want to come for that one, that would be the time.
Kurt?
I've got some news from the Policy Committee, and we have a pilot of a self-evaluation for all the board members.
Oh, yes.
From the Washburn School District. What we plan, we want, we would like the board members to fill us out and have it back by next week.
Next Wednesday, did you say?
Next... Nineteenth. The nineteenth, back to Sue's office by the nineteenth. This is not set in stone by any means. What we're basically doing is we're gonna try a couple, three, four of these, and kind of maybe pull pieces out of each one to see how well we can evaluate ourselves. Some of the highlights of our Policy Committee meeting, we talked about the sound problems on MP3 for the, for the board meetings. Hopefully, everyone can hear me tonight. We'll find out. We're working on reviewing the purchasing policy, and we're, we'll continue. We haven't, we haven't solved anything yet as far as that goes. Trying to think what else. We also discussed superintendent's evaluation, and I think the policy kind of came up with the idea that we need to pull together a strong superintendent job description before we can really evaluate it. And I guess as the chairman of the committee, I'd like everybody's input as to, as far as what that job description should entail.
Will you be looking at that at the next meeting, Kurt, or in future meetings?
We'll probably be looking at it quite a bit.
So that you're aware, I have solicited job descriptions from sixteen school districts around the state our size. So I think that's one of the most important qualities, and at this point, I have received about two-thirds of them back. So you'll have a three-ring binder of them. And there's some really good ones.
And, you know, if the committee's looking for input, then it would be nice if we could all have those, so we can provide suggestions.
After we had our last meeting, I was wondering if we might not ask our local administrators also for things that they would like to see as part of that job description. They might have some things for our local superintendent that might not be founded in something else, something unique to our situation.
I'd want to be careful with that.
One of the things that, I don't know if Kurt probably didn't stress it hard enough, but this is just an idea of how we can use different forms around the state that are in use right now. And it's kind of our, while we're going through this, to judge this form, how we think of it, how we like it, how it answers our questions that we're looking for.
I think it's a great idea. Did you say, Carrie, you're gonna compile the results?
I'm gonna pick these up, and I'm gonna have this all tallied by our next meeting, so everybody has to get it to Sue, so I can get it from her.
That is great.
One more comment. I was thinking about you tallying these things, and were you planning to average the numbers or show each number?
Yeah, I'm gonna say, you know, I'm gonna...
That would be important to see.
Maybe I could get another copy of this.
Sure.
And then I can write that, you know, so many people circled five, or so many were threes, or that's what I planned on doing.
Yeah, I just think that'd be really interesting to see.
Tom?
When I was, in the good old days, when I was part of that committee, I think, I sort of gathered a few of these things as well. Are you interested in any more of these?
Yes.
I'll see what I have.
We have the other ones, too. We just thought we'd start with them.
Okay, but I had a couple others I don't know if they necessarily had or not from other places, so I'll share those with you if you're interested.
Carrie, one thing, Tom, that was interesting, is we had quite a few, and some were really super detailed. I mean, they were really neat to look at, and we just kind of picked this, I think, as our starting point. And you might be getting a couple of different variations that you'll have to complete. So, you know, and if you, I don't know if there's a place on here for comments, but it would be nice to know what you've thought of this form. Is that on the very back? Oh, yeah, on the very last thing.
Maybe, yeah, I don't have to really talk about the form, but we could add comments and others. Anything else from Policy, Kurt?
No. Our next meeting is July two thousand and two.
Sounds like you have some great things. Thank you. Let's see, anything going on head start? Nothing going on with head start? You haven't started yet? No one, you're done, right, Ron? Anything with the government? One week's not meeting, no?
You're doing great.
Just sit down and do it now. Human growth involved?
Not recently. No, we did. Textbook series for next year.
Oh, okay. Good.
It's one thing that we did, get a coalition.
Any other board meetings I missed, or legislative liaise? Ron, do you have any?
Their, the latest layer I got, June second, and everybody is looking at prep time and Q E O. I mean, there's a lot of teacher contracts across the state that are getting very heated. And one of the other major issues, though, and this is something that a lot of boards and the states is looking at, and that's health insurance costs that is now getting really a heavy burden on schools. And I'll just give you one of the ideas that they were looking at was the W A S B is advocating for school boards to have the authority to choose their health insurance carrier outside of the collective bargaining process. You know, and that would be something that could be used instead of the Q E O, or vice versa, or whatever, you know? But there are a lot of ideas being floated out there. They just have to get past this budget and pass that they're stuck in right now.
Any other comments from anybody I might have missed on any of them? Okay. Issues for the next meeting? Anything that we haven't already gotten on the agenda? Ron?
Was there a clue, or is there any feedback, or were we gonna be talking about parking lot fees, or how things are going, or is that scheduled any time in the future?
You would be over that.
Okay, all right.
Anybody else? Lynn?
Well, Brenda brought up the WKCE. Will that be back, since the wire goes lifted?
Yes.
That we can have that? The blockade's over.
And we have, we have a couple other things, I think, kicking out there to bring back, so if there's anything else.
Moving even more was the end of your budget, annual budget report.
Radio schedule? Anyone able to attend the radio tomorrow? It's eight fifteen, regular time.
I can do it.
You can do it?
Mine.
Okay.
I'd like to have a...
Kurt, you can raise your hand?
Brenda?
No.
Oh. Brenda, you can do it. Great, okay. Lynn and Brenda, super. All right. I'll join the chat if you want to. You want to?
Okay, then we are looking at a motion to adjourn, maybe with a little recess?
I'm sorry, can I interrupt for just a moment? I didn't see this until later, and I didn't want to interrupt, but you said you didn't need a second on the resolution of school board authorizing a motion's law. And I stated on here that it's...
Oh, it was seconded. Then we'll just go back and just go back and redo it.
Somebody like to second the resolution?
Yeah, does anyone want to second the resolution?
Carrie.
Is there any objection to putting Jeff in as the second and not revoting on a motion? We can vote as a stand? Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much, Lauren. Then I would love for a motion to adjourn into executive closed session pursuant to discussing statutes nineteen point eight five, parren one and E, for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session with a five-minute recess. Kurt?
Sold.
Do I have, oh, Kurt, second.
Second.
Oh, roll call vote, Lauren. Uh-oh, do we rather stay? No, okay. Jeff Peterson?
Aye.
Louisa?
Aye.
Lynn Zetner?
Aye.
Ron Bane?
Aye.
Kurt Eckes?
Aye.
Carrie Kaler?
Aye.
Brenda Maymer?
Aye.
Tom Muller?
Aye.
Pepper?
Aye.